All right, everyone, welcome to the school committee meeting of Thursday, September 28th, 2017. I first want to welcome Marion Nolan, who is the AA's first vice president. She's sitting at the table tonight, and she is a reading specialist and a team leader, K through five, at the Bishop Elementary School. Thank you for being here. And Rob Marchand is here. He is a sophomore at Arlington High School. I got that right?
Yep.
All right, welcome. Feel free to join in anytime you want. Okay, we're going to begin tonight with open meeting. Why are we doing that? We're going to begin with you, Ruthie, right? We're going to begin with Ruthie. We're going to open the meeting. The meeting is open. Ruthie is here to give a report on our facilities, so I'm going to let you go to it. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for having me. I'm really excited to show you what we've been doing in the facilities department. This is a presentation, but I'm happy to have questions in the middle or dialogue, so, you know, feel free to raise your hand if you've got a question. This is the staffing of the facilities department. A little bit about myself, I'm an architect. I developed affordable housing for 15 years in California, and then when I came back home to the East Coast, I was fortunate enough to become Arlington's first energy manager in 2013. And then when the town created a facilities department, I was fortunate enough again to be the first director of the department. So, been in Arlington almost five years, and it's been very exciting, really great stuff going on. One of the reasons why I wanted to show this to you is we've had some changes. So, for example, this HVAC two people, we never had an HVAC tech in-house. We always had an external company, cost us over $100,000 a year in a contract. Every time they came out, it was $100 bucks to get here, $100 bucks to go home, and we never knew anything more than what they told us when we saw them. There was no data that was stored for us, there was no chronology of what had happened over the years to the piece of equipment. So, we requested to add a position of an HVAC tech in-house. We have a great person onboard, his name is Kyle, and so now I'd say at least half, if not three-quarters of our repairs are done in-house. What's critical is that now Kyle knows all the pieces of equipment on all our roofs and all our boilers, and so he starts to have a history of what he has seen, what's been breaking, what's repaired and didn't get fixed. If a third-party contractor comes in for a bigger project, he's there to learn what they see is wrong, to learn how to fix it, and also, again, to chronicle, as I'll show you later, what was done to the pieces of equipment. So, we're trying to bring the knowledge in-house, not just have it with a third-party that walks away and doesn't tell us anything. The other person that we have, the second HVAC person, is a new gentleman named JJ, and he is preventive maintenance. That's all he does, and it's a full-time job, is to do the preventive maintenance on our buildings. We have specifically the HVAC. We, as a town, have spent a wonderful amount of money on rebuilding many of our schools, and the key is we want those buildings to last. We want them to be warm when they need to be, cool when they need to be, we want right ventilation for the kids, in the classrooms, in the gym. So, JJ's job is to go through each piece of equipment, and there's a certain time per year that he goes through them, and he does the maintenance, but he also, again, he chronicles what he does, what he sees. If he looks at a piece of equipment where he's changing the filter, but he realizes that the belts are wearing out, now we know, right? Now he comes to us and says, "We need to fix the belt, or we need to repair them." Before, if we did third-party preventive maintenance, you know, no negative judgment on them, but they probably wouldn't tell us when we saw them, "You should change this now." They would wait maybe till it broke, and then they would call us. So, we're really trying to bring internal, all the knowledge of our building equipment. One thing I'm also really proud of is the supervisor of maintenance, that's Michael McCarthy. He was actually the town electrician for 11 years. He applied for this position and beat out all the competitors. There were a number from outside, and so I'm really excited that we were able to promote someone from a trade job to being a supervisor. So, what we've done in the facilities department is, again, trying to chronicle all of our information. So, we have three modules in a software program from a company called School Dude, which they are as very cool as they sound. So, we've got work orders, preventive maintenance, and capital forecast. It's a little bit hard to see, but the way that work orders used to work in Arlington is you would call someone's cellphone, and they would write what you just said on a post-it note. And then they would put it somewhere, and you hope, and they hope, that they remembered it. And if you were really squeaky wheel, you called and you had like 20 post-its for your work order. But nobody knew when you called, what you needed, there was no record of it. So, right now, anybody who works in the town or the schools is able to access the software program, the work order program, and they can put in a work order. They can all create their own account, it's very simple, and we can see at a glance how many work orders we have that are outstanding, how many we've completed. We can sort it by school, we can sort it by type of equipment, we can sort it by whatever you want to sort it by. So, we can start to look back and say, you know, which school is taking the most amount of our maintenance guy's time, right? Or which school constantly is moving things from this school to that school 10 times a year? Can we be smarter about that? Because we can look and see what the work orders are. The work orders are for maintenance and custodial, so if you need a particular thing cleaned, if you need something fixed, it all goes through the work order system. So, I'm just going to try to walk you through a couple of the important points about the work order. So, again, you can, every building in the town is listed here. We've made it specific to Arlington, so all of our schools are here, all of our town buildings, it's, you know, the request date. You try to, as much as you can, elicit a real detailed description of what people are looking for, what they want us to do. Up here, you'll see it says priority, and one of the things you can check, so you can tell them it's low, medium, or high, but what's really important is here, you could check a box that says emergency. And that sends a text to either the supervisor of maintenance or the supervisor of custodians. So, if you really have an emergency, like, you know, there's water leaking somewhere, it's not like life or death, but we really need you to get over here, it sends them a text right away. All the other work orders come in to their email inboxes, and they send them out, you know, throughout the day. So, what we're trying not to have people do is to have 20 people calling us, "I have an emergency." If it's not life-threatening, you know, if it's not a serious issue, check that box emergency, and we'll know about it. Couple of other things, it, you put in your, your phone number comes up automatically, so if we don't know where you are, we don't understand what you're talking about, or we don't know where to go, we can call you. And down here, what starts to happen is you put in, you get like little pictures to check boxes, like if it has to do with painting, there's a little paintbrush. If it has to do with HVAC, there's some kind of, you know, air conditioner-looking unit. So, again, it, you don't have to be able to understand exactly what the words mean. Technically, you can choose a picture. But then the system automatically sorts where the work order should go. Is it maintenance? Is it custodial? So, automatically happens, we've set that up behind the scenes, so that our supervisors are getting the right work orders to their inboxes. And then, I'm not sure if you can see it here, but you can also attach a picture, which we love. If something is broken, or you don't like your desk, or just send us a picture, and we'll know exactly what we're looking for. So, as much information as can be given to us, we get in the work order, and then we can also respond, right? If we're, if a part is on order, or we can't get to you, or this wasn't approved by your principal, we can respond in the work order, and then it's all tracked, right? So, anybody can go in and look at their work orders and see where their work order is. So, it's very easy to communicate with us without having to call and find us. So, the next piece of software is preventive maintenance, and what is really wonderful about this is, not only have we put in, at this point, over 100 at least, preventive maintenance work orders, but whoever the tech is that goes out to do the work order writes inside the work order what they did, what they saw, anything particularly we need to know about next year, like at the Bishop School, you have to, you know, talk to this person first before you go into that room. It's all chronicled in here. And so, the system is set up where Michael McCarthy, the supervisor of maintenance, he writes down all the requirements for the preventive maintenance of each piece of equipment, so when you get the work order as a maintenance person, you know exactly what to do. And then, a month before the preventive maintenance work order is due, it gets sent to the person, so they know it's upcoming in their work log. You know, if they're taking vacation, or they know they have like lots of work and they won't get to it, we can have a dialogue. What's also is here is we do have third-party who do some of our preventive maintenance, and this basically goes to the administrative assistant for facilities, and then she schedules the preventive maintenance that should happen. So, again, we're tracking everything in the software system. Anybody could go in and say, "When's the last time we changed the filters at the, you know, Brackett School?" Well, when are they, you know, they're not due for another two weeks. Well, let's discuss why we think we need to do them earlier. The last piece of the software is capital forecast, and what this is basically is, every piece of a building, the roof, the windows, the foundation, the, you know, any electrical wiring, any light, any, anything, at some point will have to be purchased again, right? That's our 30-year kind of capital plan. So, what this does, this is actually a picture of the Thompson School, which is our most recent school and has a very long forecast, but we've put in probably about 75% of the pieces of the building of the Thompson. And this system, the software, it asks for, you know, what region of the country we live in, and it has an automatic inflation factor, and then it says, based on what that piece of equipment is and when we installed it, when we'll need to replace it, and how much it will cost. So, to me, this is like, this is going to be great. When this is totally filled in, it'll be great. And so, one of my challenges was, when are we going to get the time to fill in all the information about all of our buildings? So, one thing that this software has is a spreadsheet. It has about 20 different columns that you fill in about each piece of equipment, serial number, model number, warranty date, who installed it, when they installed it, everything you want to know and don't want to know about a piece of equipment or a piece of the building. So, what you can do is you can fill out this spreadsheet, and then you can upload it into School Dude. So, I could put down 20 pieces of equipment, answer, you know, 10 to 20 questions on each one, and then it becomes in the capital forecast. It tells me 20 years, 30 years, how much it's going to cost, when you need to replace it. So, we tried this concept on the Stratton project. GNR was the contractor, and I said, you know, "Will you be my guinea pig, and will you fill in four pieces of HVAC equipment, these 20 questions?" And so, they were very generous, and they said, "Sure, no problem, we'll fill it in." So, they filled it in, I sent it to School Dude, they uploaded it, and lo and behold, now the Stratton starts to have a 30, a 20, 30, 40-year capital outlook. So, the coolest thing that we're doing now is, on the Gibbs project with Shawmit Construction, it's in the specifications that all the subcontractors who are installing something that we would have to replace at some point, now they get that spreadsheet as part of the bid package, and they know they have to fill that in. So, on the Gibbs, I don't have to go back and type in anything, it'll all be in there automatically, right? So, any project we do, even the addition to the Thompson, there's a unit on the roof, that also got put into the spreadsheet. So, again, not only are we chronicling the data, but we're making, you know, we're doing it in a smarter way. We're not having folks, like we were doing on the Thompson, sitting down and typing everything in. So, very user-friendly, and, you know, gives us a very easy-to-read graph, and you can slice it by roof, you can slice it by foundation, you know, you can see whatever you want to see in terms of what our costs are going to be in the future. But I have to say that we're not, you know, the Thompson is the only one we've really put in yet. We need a little more time to get the other, the other schools in. But for the high school, this will be clearly what we're going to do, right? I mean, from the very beginning, we will be smart about how we chronicle everything we're going to do to the high school. One of the last things I wanted to talk about was our schedule. So, again, it used to be, come June, or even July, some of the principals would call and say, "Could you do this this summer?" And I'm like, "This summer's already, like, started and almost gone," you know? So, I tried to work with all the principals to figure out a schedule. You know, we meet in October, I tell them to think about their summer projects in November, they start in Thanksgiving, they come back to me after New Year's, we talk about what they want, I meet with Dr. Bodie, and by February, we figured out what we're going to do this summer, either from our internal funds, we've already submitted to capital, but this is our own internal projects, and so we can start allocating our staff. How many guys are we going to need? When can they go into each building? We have camps in some buildings, so you have to wait until the end of the summer. So, the principals know what they're going to get, they're, you know, ready for it, we commit to do it, and it's a much better flow in terms of the expectations that are being met, but also we tell them what we can and can't do, right? So, some schools, like the Odysseum, you know, need and want lots of changes, and we can only do, you know, so much per summer, particularly if they have a summer camp. So, they know that in February. They're not surprised in July when I say, "How could I possibly do that now? You know, I've got all this other work." So, I'm trying to have everybody give me their expectations upfront, so we could tell them what we can meet, and then there's less frustration. The last thing I want to share with you, which is, this is like in the super-cool world. So, one thing I'm trying to do as we move forward with our projects is to put Arlington on a higher level of sophistication for our design, for our construction, for our data coming in. In the latest project at the Gibbs, we're working with Shawmit Construction, and what they, what they've bought, actually, is this camera, it's a Matterport camera, and it does scanning. It has like an infrared light, and it scans 360 degrees in a building, and it can see, it can basic, it's hard to, well, we'll see a video, but basically the camera can tell you what's exactly in the building. Once you demolish the walls, it can tell you what's really there. So, on the Gibbs, we had some old drawings, we went in there and did some measurements, but we didn't take down any ceilings because it was an occupied building. So, we have what's called a Revit model. That's a model where we, the architects drew what they measured and what they thought they saw. But the Matterport camera actually scans and measures what's really there, where the roof beams really are, and then it can take the scan, and you'll see this happen, and put it over the Revit model, and you'll see pictures of this, where we can see what we thought was there, from our measurements and our pictures, to what's really there, because it's scanning and able to actually measure from a laser. So, we never knew about this. Shawmit brought it to us, they're doing it on the Gibbs, and you'll actually see a picture of something that we didn't know about the Gibbs that we learned when we, when we did this. So, you want to, we're going to show a video. This is a video of the Gibbs, of some of the pictures, of some of the scanning they did at the Gibbs. It's a little bit hard to hear, so, but he's, he's basically walking us through what you're seeing.
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ ...[1260.35] And we keep them on the facility server, which everybody, you know, we can look at all the drawings on the server. A, we don't have to worry about losing the drawings, but B, we can easily find what we're looking for in a construction project. Instead of calling someone, they send you a PDF, it's not the right part of the drawing, it's all, you know. So again, just trying to get as much information as we can in a sophisticated way and be able to utilize it. Anybody, right? The electrician, the plumber, the supervisor of maintenance, even the custodians, right? They can certainly look at some of these drawings and help us understand where they think the problem is. So that's basically what we're doing in facilities. Really excited and we appreciate all the support that we've gotten from the schools. Dr. Bodie has been great working through a lot of issues with us, but I feel like Arlington has really moved leaps and bounds, you know, since I started a couple of years ago. So thank you and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Yeah, sure.
Any questions? I want to compliment Ruthie Bennett because our schools have never been in as good a shape as they can be as they are now. And it's very complicated as our schools get used more and more. In fact, this summer was an all-time high usage and yet they still were able to complete the projects that we set out in February, March and get the cleaning done, the deep cleaning. So it has really made a huge difference to have her in this leadership role and have this level of organization. It was, you know, I'm not saying there wasn't the transition time as people got used to this software program and getting used to the schedule in which we need to plan, but it's getting better and better all the time. And so I want to publicly thank you and your department for the great work you're doing for us.
Yeah, it's been great. Thank you.
I too want to echo that. I mean, I have the privilege of working with Ruthie also on the permanent building committee and she's 110% and Arlington is just super benefited from her experience and her work ethic. And a little bit I've seen she's inspired her people with it too. So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I have a great staff. I really, they are excellent.
Tracy.
So this is fascinating. To take it all the way to where I'm hoping it'll go, I would imagine that this will mean we will save money down the road because we won't have emergencies. You know, there's not going to be the emergency elevator repair. We can do it, or at least not as many.
Right, right. So no, that's a really, that's a really good comment. So I would say first off, having the HVAC person in-house and the preventive maintenance person in-house takes down the emergency factor by, you know, 50, 60, 70% because we are looking at our own equipment all the time. And he's changing a filter, but he's also looking at the belt and the actuator. And so instead of someone, a third party coming in, doing one thing and leaving, we have someone looking at everything. So that's definitely, that's definitely true in terms of saving money. I think also part of it is I'm trying to create a different culture for us of not reactive, but proactive, right? Let's prevent, let's think about, so as you all know, we had an issue with the rooftop unit at the Edison. So after we realized that this one was not coming back, we looked at the other ones, right? And I talked to Dr. Bodie about, well, what should we say to Capitol? When will we need a new one, right? And how can we stagger it? And again, just trying to think more about if that one's going and its neighbor is similar age and similar usage, it's on its way out. But the preventive maintenance will help them last longer. Part of what happens, this is like a minute detail, but if you don't change the filter, it gets clogged. The motor starts working harder and harder and wears itself out. And we have this at the Stratton right now and the unit ventilators in the classrooms where the motors were working really, really hard and all of a sudden, like one at a time, they started to die. Some of that issue is working with the teachers to understand how unit ventilators work. Like on-off is not what they like to do, but also some of it is us getting in there and looking at the inner workings on an annual basis. So yes, absolutely, the point is to save money, but to be proactive so that we don't have these emergencies. Although I will say elevators are the worst.
Especially one elevator. The other question, so the model, the manner, whatever it was. That only works if you take all the ceilings and walls off, right? It's not doing x-ray. I'm serious a little bit. I mean, it could be done with x-rays, right, to measure, but it's not doing that, right?
Correct, right. So what it's doing for us is it's taking a Revit model, which is the way the architects basically design now. They create this wireframe model from old drawings and from their measurements. And it says, here's what's really here. And you put them together in the software program and automatically it lines them up. So the value to us is, as you saw, where is that roof truss really landing? It's not landing over here, it's actually landing, you know, two and a half feet away. That's critical. So yeah, it's not, it's not x-raying, but it is helping us understand the difference between what we saw, what we measured and what's really there. And then again, for posterity, we will know where everything is before we close it up. In a 360-degree, you know, view. I mean, it's, it's cool.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Paul.
This is stunning. I'm just really fascinated, especially by the camera. The, you know, having lived through the Edison rebuild where they were discovering all sorts of wacky stuff in the process, it would have been an absolute joy to have something like this back in the day when we did that. And fortunately, most of our buildings are new enough that, you know, you can project out a long way for the critical stuff. And I'm really thrilled to hear that you've incorporated the construction folks to get it into school dude so that we have the baseline to go for. So this is, this is all magnificent. I'm very impressed and, you know, as an all-time school committee member, it's not often you really learn something new and cool at a school committee meeting, but this is one of them. So my question for you is totally off-topic, unrelated. We've got this building here that we're sort of keeping patched together to the extent we can with the knowledge that it's going to be a new, wonderful facility in a couple of years. Can you sort of comment on how we're making it through to the demise, the final demise of this thing? And how much are we spending on duct tape?
Well, you know, how are we making it through? We are prioritizing, right? So clearly thermal comfort, student-staff comfort is critical and we fix. Right now, we're spending money on the boiler in the mechanical B boiler room because we need to. We are not, we're trying not to do any kind of large change of spaces. Even though we still have new staff coming into the high school, we're trying not to spend a lot of money on creating, you know, new offices. We're trying to do it as simply as we can. We are doing more preventive maintenance. So we had an issue with the red gym where, you know, on X number of degree day thing just stopped bringing in fresh air. And so we said, you know, we've only got like whatever, let's say two or three more years in this building. We're not going to buy a new one, but we need to get in there and figure out what of the guts can we take out of that piece? And buy new guts and, you know, that's cheaper than taking it all out and putting in a new one. So trying to understand each issue at that time and figuring out what can we do to save this piece of equipment for two or three more years? Or, you know, do we need to buy a new one? And if we buy a new one, can we save that new one, right? We put the solar panels on. In the agreement, we said clearly, we're going to take them off at some point, storm over here, then we're going to put them back. So trying to do both.
Very impressive. I'm, this is great.
I know, isn't it cool?
Yeah, it's really cool. I could just think of how much time we play with this.
I want to echo as well how impressed I am. Four years ago, when I ran for school committee, I heard from many, many people that Arlington put up all these new buildings, but then didn't maintain them. And that was a common criticism and everyone was like, yeah, that's sort of right. And that's no longer true. And it's really exciting, just the whole effort. I mean, the tools are cool, but the whole effort and the foresight is really amazing. I have actually a question, and it could also be for Dr. Bodie, about what happens at the school level? So who has the authority to make the requests? I assume then it goes to the principal first, you know, do all teachers have the, have the authority to make requests or?
Right, that's a good question. So I meet with the principals. They know, we've talked about the schedule, they know when it's coming. Most of their requests are related to what a teacher might need or a new classroom layout or a new classroom coming in of children that we didn't have the year before. So I try to keep it at the principal level. They gather their ideas. And then also I talk to them about what all of them are requesting, right? Like you asked for 15 things and your neighbor asked for two, so, you know, so. But we do talk about the money, we do talk about our resources. What can we, you know, realistically get done in two months when, as we saw, there's lots of summer camp, taking up lots of time? And, you know, a lot of my staff take vacation, so I'm not fully staffed for eight months. So, but we really keep it at the principal level.
So usually the principals is making these requests?
Yes, yes.
And then even, and then sort of a detailed question. Previously, the principal would sort of walkie-talkie the custodian to fix like a clogged toilet or something. Does that now go through the system or does that, those type of things still go through?
Right, so if it's something the custodian can do, clogged toilet, it depends on how challenging. But like if there's a milk spill, you know, you don't have to put it in school dude, we need to get that right away. It's more of, if this is something that's a piece of equipment related, right? This is going to break, this is breaking, or it's broken, there's no heat in this room. They do it through school dude. And what I've tried to reinforce is the more you put it in school dude, the more I can say, you know, the Edison keeps having HVAC issues in this wing. I know that because I can pull it out of the school dude. If you keep calling me, I'm not going to remember. So trying to help reinforce it for them.
And then I, one more logistical question. So at the school-based level, are principals making requests both about the buildings and about the playground structures or the outside as well? Is that, that's all happening?
Right, so most of their requests are like interior classroom location and sometimes playground. We try to come forward with playgrounds. So the Capitol, the five-year plan has spots for the playground upgrades. And we actually, I'm working with the Department of Public Works and the Director of the Park and Rec. The three of us are working together now to talk about all the playgrounds in town because there's one pot of money. So, you know, let's just make sure we get all the playgrounds fixed. So it's a back and forth. The principals usually come with, I need this change to this classroom. I come back to them with, this is what else we're doing to your building because your door is not closing or your, you know. So it's, if they know about it and it's a project on the exterior, they'll come to us. More often than not, we're already aware of it.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right. We have to move to public, anybody else? We got to move to public participation. Ruthie, thanks so much. Good luck at your next meeting. I know you have another one right now.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here for public participation? Anyone sign up, Karen? Oh, nobody did. All right.
This is a hand up.
Oh, you are, oh, I'm sorry. Come on up. Yeah, you're, yeah. Oh, yeah, okay, no, no problem. Yeah, okay.
Just make sure you give, no, sorry.
No, you just.
Give your name at some point.
Give your name. And then you got to speak into the mic, sorry to, yeah.
My name's Erin Wayland and I had emailed you, some of you, I'm from the Pierce School and I have a kindergartner there. And I have a parent petition that our school had circulated. And we'd emailed, or I had emailed you and some other parents as well about the fact that we don't have full-time kindergarten aides this year. And I don't know if everyone got any responses or anything. And so I just wanted to bring it to the school committee tonight as an issue of importance to myself as an individual, other parents at our school, the teachers at our school, and also our administrator. Our principal has paid for full-time aides for this first month of school because she felt it was important. She did it out of discretionary budget. And for us, it's the first time we have three full kindergartens at our school and modifications weren't made to the third classroom based on projections for next year. We weren't sure we'd have three, three kindergartens again. So one of them is on the third floor. It doesn't have an included bathroom, doesn't have included cubbies. So the kids are asked to be more independent up there. In talking with our school committee, parents noted that they were very concerned about our large class sizes, people's or teachers' ability to instruct and implement IEPs. Also just that our curriculum Tools of the Mind is designed for small group instruction. And so we're asking if there's any way to continue with the full-time aides at our school for this year as we adjust to having three classes. A lot of people at our school are at our curriculum night, which happens to coincide with this meeting unfortunately. And so I know other parents wanted to be here, but they're at our school tonight. And as I was listening to the interesting presentation that was just made, I thought it was useful to talk about saving money down the road. And so in my discussions with both the administrator and teachers, they talked about early success in kindergarten really leading to continued success for people. And so I just wanted to open that discussion or share my thoughts about it and our community's concern.
All right, thank you very much. We've seen the emails. We have a rule in public participation in that we don't respond.
Okay.
So we just got it on the record.
Okay. And then what happens?
At some point during the meeting, someone will probably bring this up.
Okay.
And it may be referred to a subcommittee or there may be questions of the superintendent during her report in about an hour or whenever that's on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
All right, okay. Thanks for being here. Anyone else for public participation? All right, thanks so much. Human Rights Commission appointee is not here. OECD test update. Dr. Jangar, Mr. McKnight.
So I'm here with Paul McKnight, who actually coordinated the OECD testing. And he's going to start out, we're going to tag team throughout. Ready?
Yes. Hello again, everyone. I was, I had the privilege of presenting to you in the spring to tell you about the administration of this test before we actually had, had the results and we're here to share some of the results. So I think we were going to begin just by reviewing some of those fundamentals. Again, the OECD PISA is the test that's administered by the Organization for Economic Cooperation Development internationally and that a test of a similar, a very similar design was, became available in the U.S. to provide school-level data that something is not available internationally and that we signed on to become part of a consortium. As part of that consortium, we had the, we were able to administer the test, which we did in March to a pool of about 70, 15-year-olds. I wanted to say one thing again about that, that group of students, that it was not a cherry-picked group of students. There was a randomly selected group. A few students opted out, but we did have students there from all ability levels. There were students in that group with IEPs, there were students, ELL students, there were students with some social and emotional learning needs. So it really was a cross, a cross-section. And I, after presenting that to you in the spring, I went home and tossed and turned realizing that, of course, students had no incentive in this to do well. They were not going to get their individual results and there was no carrot or anything like that. And I was like, I'm really terrified that they didn't try. When we got, we got our first set of results back in June where the results were, were referenced against 2012 PISA results. We got recently another set of, another report just last week where it was referenced against 2015 results. Both of these reports, not only, I think, we were relieved to see that the students did well, but actually encouraged to see that they did exceptionally well. So the highlight is that our students performed exceptionally well in all three areas, reading, math and science. Not only in comparison, in comparison to other schools in Massachusetts, to other schools in the country and to other students around the world. And as you will see, it's not only that their overall level of performance, but the number of students who are performing at the highest, highest levels in those particular subjects.
So the thing that really attracted us, I mean, we have lots of testing going on and so more testing is not necessarily something we want to do. But participating in this partnership was interesting because in addition to being able to just sort of get levels of achievement and the comparative data internationally, two major advantages of this test, which Mr. McKnight will talk about in a bit, are the, that they look at elements of classroom practice, classroom climate. Few interesting results there. And then in addition, we get to collaborate internationally with other groups that are participating in the PISA test for schools. So this one's a little bit hard to read. It's a little weird because it's actually cut scores. So they looked at quartiles in terms of performance to make this comparison. And if you look, our highest performing quartile has a cut score. That means 25% of our students do better than this of 620 on their test, whereas the mean score is 565. But what's more helpful to really understand, and they can go through the lower quartiles and upper quartiles. But what's particularly helpful to understanding this, we didn't get this in the original report and I'm not sure it went in the report because we sent out the data to you, I believe. But what this is, is a comparison by performance level. On the test, there are six levels of performance. And I went to a workshop this summer where I was actually somewhat late in the game, asked to present. And it was because of this piece of information and one other piece of information. And the six levels of performance, if you look, if you wanted to, we looked at sort of actually what the kinds of questions are. What kind of reading, what kind of mathematical analysis they're looking at, what kind of scientific analysis they're looking at. There are three similar charts to this. And when you look at the levels of performance, the highest levels, the four, five and six, the top three bars on that chart really would line up with what we consider to be honors and AP levels of performance. And what was really surprising was not just that we were in, if you look in Massachusetts, the top three performing schools on reading, for example. If you go down somewhere right in the middle, you can see the scores in Singapore, which often is touted as being one, the top performing on the PISA in the world. And if you go down to just below the United States, you'll look at Shanghai, which again is touted as being one of the highest performing areas in the United States. But what's most impressive is if you look at the proportion of our students that are performing at the highest levels. And in every single test, we outperformed everybody on the map. And so those are very high levels of performance. They require analytic conversation, not simple reading performance. And you'll look, our average scores, and this is an issue that we should look at. We have that little bar in the middle. The kids to the left of the bar are kids where you're expecting them to get passing but non-proficient or non-passing. We don't really have anybody in the red because red would be not passing the MCAS. We don't have anybody in the end that does that. You know, one a year if we do. And similarly, you'll look here in math. So in math, we were the highest performing school. The ones just below us are Wellesley and Natick. But most impressive again is if you look at just the number of students in that top band, it's something like 85% of the students are performing at that level. And then if you look again in science, this one was funny, I was like, wait, we're not in the top three. And then I figured out, because you could figure out by asking everybody, that we were number 12, which is the fourth. And although we are not averaging as high as Natick Mystic Valley Charter School, Mystic Valley Charter and Sturgis Charter, both of whom get a little bit of selection on their kids, again, the proportion of our students at that highest level is particularly notable. And then the last thing, which was why they called me and asked me to present, was that if you looked at everybody in the chart, and we don't actually have this chart up here, but related, you know, there's always a clear relationship between these scores and socioeconomic status in every country, across every country and in every school. And if you look at us in that performance, and I think there might be a chart that'll give that example of that, we outperformed the regression line. And that was the most notable thing and I think the thing for which we can be most proud. It's nice to capitalize on our demographic, but most impressively, we do this at these high levels of performance and above the demographics of our students.
So now Paul's going to talk a little bit about some of the breakdown.
So again, one of the interesting things about this, this test is that not only, there's not only a cognitive section, but a lengthy questionnaire. And those questions do ask, include questions about classroom climate, demographics, and in this case, reading habits. This was a graph that was both encouraging and concerning, or at least interesting, was one place where we were really sort of out of, in, where the numbers were quite different was to look at the, this number of our students who were described themselves would be described as deep and highly restricted. Now, of course, depth here versus surface has to do with a student's ability to understand a level of complexity. So deep readers are good readers and can handle challenging texts. Wide versus highly restricted is how much students read or how broadly students read. And this is not a surprise to us because we frequently hear our students are too busy to read a lot. So they read what they read in school and they do, and don't always, aren't, don't always have the time to read broadly. Of course, this did not demonstrate any lack of performance on their part. And they still perform very strongly as, as good readers. But this, again, this is something that, again, as a member of the English department, we have been aware of for a long time and have been encouraging through independent reading projects, offering more choice in summer reading and looking at other, other ways to increase student engagement and choice in what they read. Other graphs that are available in the report, talk a little bit about disciplinary climate. So here, again, the, the diamonds are the United States average and the rectangles are how students describe the disciplinary climate in their mathematics classes. So the farther to the right, the better, that's the fewer, the percentage of students who say that these things never happen. There is almost never or rarely noise and disorder in the class, for example. The, the chart for the English classes is actually perhaps even more impressive. I'm not just saying that as an English department member, but it's almost all the way over on the right. I think for those of us that work in the high school, this is not a surprise to us. We do feel as though that there is a climate that facilitates learning in, in classrooms. And as Matthew was alluding to, we also have some data. Now, again, I do not believe that this is available in the first report, which is the one I think that was shared with you, but with the one that just, just arrived to us with the 2015, where we, here we see going from left to right, students of low socioeconomic status to, or to the right-hand, students of high socioeconomic status with the average in the middle. So this suggests that there's a very little achievement gap among our students when it comes to reading. And even then, that the, the students on the lowest end of that socioeconomic spectrum are still outperforming students at the highest end at, on average, of students across the country and in other, other countries. Again, where there is a slightly larger achievement gap here in, in mathematics, again, the students of the lowest socioeconomic status are still outperforming students on average in the United States and even students on average at the highest socioeconomic levels. As well as Finland and, Finland and Singapore. Again, those numbers stay, those, those trends stay relatively consistent in all three areas, the math, science and the reading. In the reports, you'll, you will also see just graphs like these that show where we stand, where we rank on average compared to many of the other countries that participate. And again, this, this, another way of representing that level of, the proficiency levels. So where we have, you can see the numbers nationally. At levels five and, four, five and six start to tail off. Whereas the percentage of our students that are still performing at the levels four, five and six, the highest levels of performance, are still quite high and great discrepancy between there and the rest of the, the country.
So this, the preliminary information, not the information we just received, has been shared with the department. And I mean, what's always nice about these things is you don't want, you want them to tell you something that's a little different from what you know, but you also would like not to be surprised because one would hope that you're doing things that you expect. So in English, if you look, actually already, as we went into this, but now, two of the goals are student ownership of text, more variety of text, hiring. goals are student ownership of text, more variety of text, hiring engagement, and more student individualized reading. And then in math, again, they're working on engagement. And so, we'll look and see. There's a question we're discussing, they call, the OECD called me just a couple of days ago to ask whether we were going to re-administer the test this year or next year. And we were discussing it, and we will defer if somebody has a strong opinion. At this point, I think our sense was that we would give the new English curriculum a couple of years to run, as well as the math curriculum, rather than administering a new test when we don't really think we're likely to see a significant change. We have a little bit of time to make that decision if there are questions that people have. So, that's basically it. I was thinking what, Paul hit most of the things in the head. But I did want to go back to the one which I just thought was particularly interesting, the one about restricted reading. So, that was pretty striking in that 65% of our students report being restricted readers. If you look at the regression line, usually, being a restricted reader goes along with a penalty in terms of overall reading scores. Our students didn't have that. It was actually a straight line, and then it dropped when you went to the non-deep readers in terms of scores because they break them out by the court, those six zones. But being a broad reader is a virtue in and of itself, whether or not it affects your overall reading score. So, that's why it's something we're working on. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead. Yeah. The, when, does this take, test take into consideration the, the difference in curriculums with the other countries and stuff?
So.
Or the emphasis on certain areas and things of that nature?
It, it doesn't. I mean, the PISA is a international comparison. They showed us a map. I mean, all the OECD countries plus another huge range of countries across the world. It targets 15-year-olds. So, it is curriculum-based. So, it is possible that in some schools, they have taught stuff that we haven't taught. And if that's the case, that's the case.
And if I may, the, the economic factor, the disparity in it, again, that would be different from community or country to country and things of that nature. I saw it very close in China, probably because there was that much of a difference in the, in the socioeconomic groups. But I'm, I'm just wondering, are we comparing apples to oranges sometimes?
Well, I mean, the idea of the test, I mean, one of the big conversations in the test in, in the comparative data is to look at the schools and both schools and countries where the systems are getting the same levels of performance with low SES students. Because one of the big, I mean, if you look, and I debate some of these, but if you look, I mean, if you look in the, in China, and they do a regression line against socioeconomic status, they have a slant. If you look in Canada, they, it's, and it's the same line every single time. They all pretty much parallel one another. And so, then the question is, does China do a better job with their low socioeconomic status students than Canada does? And there's a lot of conversations to have there about that. So, that's part of why Arlington was, stood out, not just because of our high levels of performance, but because we outperformed the regression line. We are sitting way up above, not only, you know, it's not just that we're at this end, but we're at this end even when you regress it and take out the effects of socioeconomic status.
Thank you.
I think that's really important because I think that one of the points people make is that our success is a function of our socioeconomic changes that are happening in, in the town. And it's, it's great to see that we're outperforming that. I have a couple of questions. One, is it timed? Is the test timed? And then two, I actually just missed how many students took the test.
So, we sent a list of every eligible student, and they sent us back a list of, what, 85?
Eighty-five, okay.
And then we had a response rate of, what, about 87 students?
Sixty-nine students took the, sat the test. The cognitive section happened in two one-hour blocks. So, it was, it was a timed. Most students finished with time remaining. So, I don't know that time was, time did not appear to be a factor that constricted their responses.
And then I just thought.
There's a characteristic where they call them time-driven tests. Like, they give you an hour, but it's supposed to take 40 minutes, so even though it's timed, it's not a time-driven test.
Right, right. And then I just want to encourage you to get the updated presentation to Karen.
Yeah, we'll send you the report with the new data.
Great, okay. Perfect.
You have the presentation, right? There's a new report.
We, we, I'm, we sent out the earlier report to the whole school.
Yeah, we did have that, but the presentation is a little different than what we received.
Okay, if you click on the link, it's live, so it'll be the same.
I didn't upload it to know.
No problem. So, just, yeah.
What we added in, for anyone who cares, is just the two charts at the top for math and science. Those were erroneously left out.
So, it's really impressive what we see, and of course, I'm going to ignore that and focus on something which wasn't as impressive. I was looking at, on the discipline climate things, it's not on your graph, it's on, it's in the report.
Yeah.
Anyway, I thought it was interesting that they did both the school average and then the percentile of the highest performing kids and the one of the lowest performing kids. And they just, they saw a big difference. I'm a little confused how they, with what they're showing, how they get the average that, that the school is. But what, it made me wonder how we're doing for classes for our lowest performing kids. They reported significantly more chances of taking longer to get going to work, taking longer, that, that they can't work well, that the teacher has to wait a long time to quiet down. And I'm just thinking that, you know, is there anything that we can do to help those teachers in these, and therefore, these students?
So, I'm, I'm not looking at the one in front of you, and if I remember the ones I looked, that's not going to help. But I, I looked pretty closely at them. So, we did note that, and it's unfortunately not surprising, right, that often your lower performing classes also have more classroom management issues. It's obviously something that we're working on all the time. There's a whole range of things that we're doing in terms of working on classroom climate and school engagement and collaborative problem solving and other methods to support students. If I recall, I mean, there's, there's only, if I remember right, going through there, there was only one element of classroom management where we actually were below this national average. And I, I could be wrong on that.
Doesn't have, this one.
It doesn't put it up against national averages. But, you know, that is obviously an area we work on. And I think the two things, I mean, are in the lower level classes, students talk about issues about classroom management, and they talk about levels of challenge and engagement, right? To make those classes be more engaging is going to all pay help with classroom management and be help with student learning. I ran out of water.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Go, Kathy, go ahead, sure.
I have one question. I, I know that when, since June or July, you got a call from OECD wanting you to come to, to present because of the high number of our students perform at these highest levels. And the question is, well, why? What is the hypothesis of why our students are doing so well and performing at a higher level than what would be predicted by socioeconomic? And I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about some of your thoughts on that.
Yeah, so, I thought pretty hard about that, and the answer when they first asked was, because everyone went around and said, well, we're doing this and we're doing that. And I said, well, honestly, and I, this is really true, we're doing everything, but they didn't like that answer. And I think the better answer in terms of our intent sort of breaks into at least three or four major areas. There's change because some, there have been sort of improvements over time. I mean, first is, and foremost, is the professionalism of our staff, treating them like professionals, expecting them to be professionals, and the fact that they are. Our staff come able and ready to learn and to teach kids. And the expectation has always been that we focus not on getting kids over the line for the MCAS, the basic levels, that all of our staff and all of our departments are focusing on challenging students at the highest level. So, that's the first. The second, which is enormous, right, is these are students towards the end of their sophomore year, which means one and three-quarters of a year of high school. So, the honest truth is that the students are doing that well because they've been in a K through 12 system that is strong throughout. And clearly, one of the things that everyone says and everyone understands is necessary to that, is a strong sequence curriculum, that they're moving selectively through progressively harder and more important texts, more important mathematical content, so that they are, you know, it's called a guaranteed and viable curriculum. They actually get taught all the stuff they're supposed to be taught, and it is all covered and taught to them effectively. And then the last is targeting support towards our lowest achieving students. You know, because of our performance, periodically, people call, and they say, what is it you do? Do you look at data? And we look at data, we look at data like this, but the most important data we look at, and that's huge credit to our department heads, is lists of kids' names who are not performing. Because the lists are short enough that we can identify specific needs. So, we'll have a class because there's four kids coming into that section, or we'll target support to one or two kids. Because if you're going to bring up everybody, you really have to have that net be kid by kid in terms of targeting support. And then the last, I have to believe, over the last few years, has been a lot of effort around the overall school culture in terms of making it positive and supportive, that safe nurturing and caring, what is it, learning, caring, connecting as a school, which is in our mission.
So, just to summarize, in comparing our, our school to the top performing schools in the world, which is in Shanghai, China, we're, we're pretty much, we're pretty much equal to them in math, in all, all subjects, except we're all pretty, we're pretty much equal to, that's.
I think that's underestimating us. We do better than they do.
We do better than they do, okay. All right, I'm just trying to look at these now.
We have higher levels of performance, higher levels of students at the highest levels, and average levels of performance at or equal to them.
Okay, but the mean student performance.
Is right around there.
Is right around China. The mean student performance is right around China. And, and in Massachusetts schools, the mean student performance of the schools in this were about the same as, we were, they're about the same as China, it looks like.
Right.
So, that's, that's something for Massachusetts schools.
Well, I mean, on the PISA test, Massachusetts, if it were a country, it would be second only to Singapore.
Yeah. Great, that's what I wanted to get out there. Okay, Paul.
I mean, the thing that I, I find to be really outstanding and amazing, it's not only we can react in the performance, but we have a climate in this building that is superior to almost every high school that I've seen. You're walking through, and the kids are in there, the adults have good relations with the kids, the kids have good relations with each other. It's a positive environment. It's a good place to be. And this is just one bit of evidence that demonstrates that we've got something really wonderful happening at Arlington High.
Yes. The other thing, the other thing I said at the thing was, to be honest, we kind of just have the magic sauce. There's a lot of good stuff happening in the school.
And we've hired well. We've got good people working here.
All right, thank you very.
Last comment.
Oh, yeah, sure, go ahead.
I, I thought all those answers were right on. I, a lot of credit goes to the professional staff. But I think you see here how important it is that we have that K-12 vertical alignment by a department chair that can make sure that what's happening in all of our elementary schools is consistent, because they all are going to come to our middle school, they're all going to come to our high school, and they need to have the same opportunities, the same curriculum, the same encouragement to perform at these high levels. And so, what we're seeing is the results, a very systematic way of how we are doing education in Arlington. And, but I agree with you that, Paul, that, you know, it's really, the, the high school, I think, is exceptional also in the positive culture that's, that's here.
But we, I mean, serious hats off to K through eight in terms of giving us students every year who are able to learn, engaged in school, and at the highest level. So, we can engage with them and move them forward. It's really, it's a lot of fun every year.
Yeah, I, I just say that over the past few years, there have been substantive, major improvements at the Otis and so, you know, everybody's on their game. It's really impressive.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Is Dondrea Maxwell here?
I'd go to the football game, if that's okay.
Yeah, go, yeah. Go have fun. Dondrea Maxwell is not here yet. Okay, okay, as soon as she comes, we'll take that up. Okay, so, we have Cindy Bouvier and.
Ivy LaPlante.
Ivy LaPlante, Ivy, yeah. Good to see you, Cindy. There are rumors that you retired. I'm so glad, that's, they're false.
Well, before that, could I say a couple of words before they start?
Yeah.
All right. Well, first of all, thank you for being here. It's been, it's a great team effort as we do these kinds of look at risk factors. I've mentioned before, and it's, we have, we have two youth risk behavior surveys, and one's at the middle school and one's at high school. The high school, we are doing differently. The Middlesex League Superintendents, which is our athletic league, decided that we would like to see a comparison of our own, of our own league, so that we are there as supports and references for each other in terms of what we might be doing in our district to help perhaps minimize certain behaviors. So, as a group, we went to Paul Andrews, who is president of Winchester Hospital, and connected to Leahy. And Leahy was, gave us a grant to be able to administer this survey at the high school online. We had the infrastructure to do that now. And we were able to get our results much more timely this summer, in fact, and Cindy and I were very much part of that. And we're very helpful also in helping with the questions we also wanted to ask that were not on the survey. Every district could ask 10, up to 10 questions. So, I just want to give you a little background on that, and as we move forward, we're going to move forward with this link and working together with the league, and the middle school will also be brought into that. Some of the league's middle schools did do it, but we already had in place the testing for this year.
So, as Kathy mentioned, this was a brand-new initiative this past March in order to have all of our students do this on the, on the computer. So, 906 students took at the same time, you know, they, they actually took it online, which was a huge feat. And the only thing that we compromised a little bit were some of our questions that we originally had because we're part of a larger group now. So, throughout the survey, throughout the results, you'll see some discrepancy here and there, and it's because we had to change some of the questions that we asked, or the way that we asked them. But we were able to put in 10 of our own, and then we were able to put in ones that have to do with the substance use grant, with the, with the perception questions. So, I mean, to that, I think that's basically the, the background between, of the youth risk behavior survey. You've seen this, we've been doing it for years. And I thought I would start off with a little bit about the trending of the tobacco. So, if you take a look at the, at the trends, Arlington High School students report below average lifetime use. And you can see on the, on the bottom there, that is the line of the, of the use of Arlington High School students, and you can see the Massachusetts state, and then the national average of tobacco use. So, again, it's excellent, our, our use is excellent, only about three, let me put it in the positive way. 96%, 96-plus percent of our students do not use tobacco. Okay? So, that, that is huge. And don't use it on a regular basis, or I haven't used it in the last 30 days. So, this starts with the Sandborne Grant. I mean, a grant that is given to us every year, where we do programs in the elementary schools, through the middle school, through the high schools. So, this is, this is something that we talk about all the time. Okay. And on the next slide, you can see that the lower-than-national-average high school students in Arlington, Mass. report similar recent use. So, that's in the past 30 days. That's that line there, which is, which is much less. And the only difference would be the e-cigarette and the vaporing, which has increased a little bit. So, in the past, in a lifetime e-cigarette use is increased slightly from, e-cigarette use. Sometimes it has tobacco in it, sometimes it doesn't. It has increased slightly from 17% to 22%. So, that's in the past 30 days. You know, lifetime use can go down. It's one of our parts that we do focus on now when we talk about the e-cigarettes. It's the newest trend. So, okay. I believe after that, we're going, we're going to move on to, by the way, I guess I should have introduced myself. I'm Cindy, and this is Ivy, for those of you that we have met before.
Hi, yes.
And we're going to move on now to the substance use portion of this. And Ivy, who is president of the Arlington Youth Health and Safety Coalition, will, will present these.
Great.
Great. So, yes, so as you, I'm sure, probably are aware, our coalition functions to prevent and reduce substance use among youth in Arlington. We've been around since 2006, but only formally received our funds through the Drug Free Communities Program, through the SAMSA, the Substance Abuse Mental Health Service Administration, through the federal government in 2008. So, I wanted to put these trends up just to, so, so we could show you how far we've come from the very first survey in 1995. And so, as you can see, when we're, when we go through these, our rates are really, they're quite extraordinary. I do want to point out too, that when we are talking about this, we're talking about use rates. However, whenever we try to present our information to the community, we always want to put the positive spin. So, as Cindy said, yes, 4% are using tobacco, but when we're presenting to the community, we want to say 90%, 96% are not using. Because that's really the norm of our community, and we're trying to promote that use among students and among parents and community members. So, yeah, so that was alcohol. So, this is recent alcohol use. Recent alcohol use is defined by past 30-day use, and you can see that it's been declining quite steadily since 1995. There was a sharp increase in 2016, but I'm not too concerned with that, as we are back down to our normal rate in 2017. Marijuana use as well, we only started testing for it in 2009, but you can see we definitely are below the national and state standard. I would like to point out that the 2017 results of the Massachusetts and National IRBS have not been released yet. They are also on a two-year basis, but it takes a little bit more time to tabulate their results. So, unfortunately, we can only compare ourselves with two years prior. So, Arlington High School student, their recent past 30-day use has, as you can see, fluctuated. We're the dark, can I see this? We're the dark blue line, so we're the one that kind of goes like, "Wheee!" Which there's a lot to, you know, add about that. Our coalition is really concerned with this. We know that there's been a lot of recent marijuana use in the community, and there's a lot of reasons why you can suggest that might be happening, but our coalition is doing a lot, which I'll get to later on. Oh, I guess that's it. So that was actually supposed to be a lifetime use. This is, so this is perception of harm. So, as Cindy was saying, perception of harm is something that we also do track. And I just want to point out that as the perception of harm of using marijuana decreases, the use rate of marijuana is slowly increasing, which is a trend that is seen across all substances. Whenever there's a decrease in perception of harm, there's an increase in use. So, currently, I think this is on my other slide, 37% of Arlington High School seniors believe it is harmful to use marijuana. And that's compared to 97% of all Arlington High School students who believe prescription drug use is wrong and harmful. So, it is definitely a point of concern, and I'll get to that a little bit later. So, prescription drug misuse, I know we've been hearing a lot about the opioid crisis and the heroin epidemic that's hitting our young people, especially those who are in their 30s, 40s, 50s. But I'm happy to say that our Arlington students are not using these substances in high school. As you've seen from the previous slides, it starts with marijuana, it starts with alcohol, and then transitions into greater substance use such as heroin and opioids later on. So, you can see our results are, are pretty good, we're definitely are lower than the Massachusetts and state aver- Massachusetts and national average. So, a little bit about mental health, we thought this was always important. Substance use is definitely directly related to mental health. And Arlington's actually this, this top line. So, this, the top line is, oh, this is all of Arlington, I'm sorry. The top line is those students who reported that they felt they were under too much stress most of the time or always. And you can see that there's a trend of increase. This blue line, which is kind of, if, it, it's at the bottom for the most part, except for an increase over here, is this middle data point. It's, they felt sad or hopeless every day for the past two weeks. And that, according to the Department of Health and Human Services, constitutes a major depressive episode. It's students who report that they feel sad or hopeless every day to the point where they stopped doing their normal activities for up to two weeks. And so that, as a community, we're definitely concerned with as well. And this bottom data point right here is those students who reported seriously attempting suicide. So that's that one. We're a little lower than depression, which is good. Okay, so, um, this next section, I thought it would be great to look at how we compare to Middlesex, right? That's why we combined all of our efforts to produce Middlesex reports, so we could see how we're doing with communities that relate to Arlington. And so these next slides really show how we relate to that. Cindy, you want to talk about?
Um, sure. So, this, this slide in particular shows students who have ever tried a cigarette, currently smoke cigarettes, ever used electronic vapor products, and currently use electronic vapor products. And as you can see, um...
The red dot, we're the red star.
And the red dot, we're the red star, and the red star is below all averages, even in the Middlesex League, and Massachusetts, and in the United States. The one place that was a little bit concerning was current use of electronic vapor cigarettes, and also ever used electronic vapor cigarettes. Just because it's the new trend, it's something that's new, it's something that's come up, it's something that's definitely harmful to the... So, we're paying close attention to that.
And something to note is that through the Sandborne Foundation and through our coalition, we are doing efforts to directly impact this. We have a youth club called Club 84, which I'm sure you're all aware of. It's a state initiative to prevent tobacco use among high school students in Massachusetts. And Arlington is definitely a top chapter, they won the greatest outreach last year and the greatest peer support. And our advisor for it, Karen Dillon, was actually nominated as best advisor. So, we definitely are topping the charts for that. And, and you can see that it's, it's working, because our rates are so low compared to the rest of Middlesex County, uh, Middlesex League, excuse me, Massachusetts and the United States. We also, our coalition works very closely with the Board of Health, and there's been several initiatives put in place to prevent tobacco use among youth. We do regular tobacco compliance checks, we've increased the age of tobacco use to 21 here in Arlington, and also removed all flavored tobacco products to try to decrease youth, uh, use of these flavored e-cigarette devices. So, alcohol use, Arlington, again, we're the red dot. So it's Arlington is the red star, Middlesex League is the yellow square. We have a blue circle is Massachusetts, and a green is USA. I feel like I'm in a kindergarten classroom here. So, again, you can see that we definitely have, Arlington High School students have reported lower alcohol use than students at Middlesex League, Massachusetts, and the United States. And again, you know, initiatives that we're working on, we're doing compliance checks with the police and our Board of Selectmen. We have a youth club at the high school, our Student Advisor Club, and they provide a lot of great resource to us and serve as good role models for their students. And we also try to host substance-free activities to promote the norm, that the majority of students are not drinking in Arlington. They're not engaging in these risk behaviors. Something to note, this currently drank alcohol on school property, it is very low, but we also are right in line with Middlesex League. Where the rest of them were a little lower. This is lifetime use. Okay, um, so, student reported marijuana use. Again, we're lower than Middlesex, Massachusetts, and the national average. All good news, and I think a lot of it has to do with, um, uh, you know, bringing knowledge to this issue. We've done presentations, our coalition has done presentations at the high school. We've provided, um, you know, similar, similar response to marijuana as we do with tobacco. And we're hoping that in the next few years, we'll be able to get a, a better handle at tobacco, at marijuana regulation and control, now that it's legal. And I also want to note that, I'm sure you're all aware of the Botvin Life Skills Training Grant that the public schools and the coalition received from the Sims Foundation over the summer. And that is a substance use prevention education curriculum that is going to be taught in FACS classes, starting in sixth grade. And we're really excited about this, because I think that the earlier you start talking about the harms related to substances, including marijuana, the less likely students are to engage in these substances. This is, you know, produced by data, and, you know, obviously anecdotal reports as well. So this next slide is illegal drug use in Arlington High School. I have cocaine, heroin, recently used prescription drugs, not prescribed to them. As well, you can see our, our rates are similar to the rest of the communities. And then this one right here is offered, sold, or given an illegal drug on school property within the last school year. We wanted to point it out, because although it is similar to Middlesex League, a little higher, it's still 14% of students are engaging in these illegal activities on school property. The coalition, again, we're looking into providing training, called DITAP training. It's the fancy word for teaching high school educators to recognize signs of drug use and to refer students to appropriate services. So, if we increase the capacity of our school staff to be able to notify this, notice this, then we can get students help when they need it, especially if they're using or dealing drugs on school property. Okay, so this next slide, I think there's only a few more, so bear with us. This next slide is about mental health risk. And across the board, students in Arlington report higher mental health risk than students in Middlesex League, Massachusetts, and the United States schools. So again, you know, it's, it's right sandwiched in between Massachusetts and Middlesex League. This is our, our report of feeling sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks, that's our major depressive episode we were talking about. This one is self-harm, this one is attempting suicide, this one's a plan about suicide, and this is actual attempt of suicide. But we've done a lot of work with the Samaritans over this past year, which is an organization to prevent suicide in Arlington. So I think that although this was a report from this year, that we definitely are increasing our efforts, and I know the school community is as well.
So, the next slide I thought was really important, given the school improvement plan that Arlington High has for this coming year, and all of the community building that's going on, and the, the new committee that is, is formed. So, 68.6% of our students said that they have an adult that they would go to, that, that may be a teacher, it may be another adult in the building, or someone, or so forth. But what will be interesting is seeing, this year, the School Community Building Committee is gathering all the data that they can on different programs, and what's going on in the building, and so on and so forth. There's three committees, there's the, the Data Committee, there is the Communication Committee, and then there is the, um, the Advisory Committee. And so, between the three of those, they're working on it this year, the school improvement plan is included in it. And, and Matt has made, Matthew has made this a, a real goal for the, for the, for the whole school. So, it'll be interesting to see what the data is in two years, when we repeat this. Given that this is, this is a full-blown effort, and it's this year and next year, and, and we'll see what the data is. So, the, the trend in this will be very interesting to see, if, if we're able to increase that number, beyond 68%. Okay.
What about the juniors?
Oh, and, and so, the juniors was a little concerning, you're right. Because the, if you can see up here, we had very few juniors that said that they had somebody that they would go to. So, that is something, and these are the current seniors for this year. So, what that is, is it chemistry, is it culture, is it, is it that year? You know, there's all those questions that are in there, and, and again, the data will be looked at this, this year, for what's going on. But it is concerning. It is, it is the bleep. So, Arlington High School students report, so, I, I really thought this slide was important, given even the forum, the parent forum that happened last night. So, Arlington High School students report lower electronic bullying and sexting rates, but similar screen time as students as Middlesex Leagues. So you can see, again, we're the red star, and we have fewer students that are electronically bullied. We have students somewhere in the middle there that played a video computer game for three hours a day. Now, we, we did, in the question, I just looked that up, that we did extract, except for school activity, homework, homework activity. So, so people are using the, their computers or having screen time for more than three hours a day. And the last one, which was probably the most concerning to me, but we are certainly better than the Middlesex League, is ever sent or received a sexual message electronically. That's 38%, that's 340 students, so 906 took it. To me, that's extremely concerning. And given last night's performance, I think it's very concerning among our parent community, because we had a large crowd at the Middlesex Partnerships for Youth presentation last night, which was on cyber safety. And so, there was a lot of people, and we had a, a great audience, and we had a couple of parents that were into the tech world, and, and offered some suggestions as well, which was wonderful. The woman who presented last night did a phenomenal job. She is also presenting to grade nine, 10, 11, 12 on our Wellness Day on December 13th. And tomorrow during the cabinet meeting, we will talk to the principals about other possible presentations to the lower grades. Now, I know some people think it's kind of late to start in nine, 10, 11, 12. You should start in fifth grade, because that's when they're getting their phones, and so on and so forth. But they really need reinforcement in the high school years. They really do, because there's some big things happening there with the college process, getting jobs, and we all know that everybody's being Googled these days, so we have to keep them safe. That's what we're trying. So, again, um, you know, how are we, how are we reacting to all this? We're trying to be proactive, we're trying to react with programs, with forums that, that will help to assist this. So, on, on our last slide, Ivy mentioned the Botvin Skills Life Training, Life Skills Training that's happening at the Audison this year. Again, that was a grant that came through, it's wonderful, it's a sustainable grant, it's being implemented by the FACS department, and, and so, we're very excited about that. The Guiding Good Choices Parent Workshop is happening again this fall and this spring. That's to help parents to have their children make better choices, and, and help them in guiding them toward that. So that will happen. The Esper Training Ivy mentioned is happening, the Wellness Day is happening in this, in December this year at Arlington High School. There'll be a marijuana community forum that happens in March, and then also Michael Brantwe workshops in April. And he's doing workshops at the Audison for parents, for students.
And staff as well.
And staff. Questions?
Paul, please.
Okay, uh, two questions. You, you, you were showing some of the national data surrounding marijuana use. The first question that I have is, uh, within the national data or from other states like Colorado, have you seen a change in these numbers in states where marijuana has been legalized? And my assumption is the answer is going to be yes. And are we getting some idea what we should be doing in that context from states who've already made that move?
Yeah, that's a great question. Something I forgot to point out is that, well, I, I did point it out, but not explicitly, that the results from Massachusetts and the United States for this section was taken from the 2015 report. So, again, it is still two years behind where we currently are. And so if you look at the data from, there's a variety of different sources, and depending on which way you, you roll, you can interpret the data differently. But there have been studies that have been done for these communities in Colorado. You know, ones where they had, the problem with Colorado is they didn't really know where they were starting. There was not really a baseline data. And so, they had a hard time seeing, well, what's the impact if they didn't know where they were starting from? We're confident we do have a lot of great baseline data here in Massachusetts, so that we can track what happens over the next few years. But, in the long and short of it, is that, yes, that, you know, perception of harm is definitely decreased, and use rate, it has increased in some communities, especially where there are retail pot shops available. But, you know, it's still to be continued. There's a great report by the Rocky Mountain HIDA, High Inten- High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. And they do a fantastic report, they keep updating it every three months or so. And I encourage you to take a look, at least even the snapshots of that. And, and you can really see the data that they, that they have shown, to really show the, the impact of marijuana use in those communities in Colorado.
And if you watch the vision, uh, not vision, if you watch 2020, the governor of Colorado was on and said, "Use our data."
Yeah.
Use it.
Yeah.
Because we are starting it, and we're providing it, so please use our data.
And secondly, the, the thing that, you know, I, I'm pleased with a lot of the trends in where we're going and where we're positioned relative to similar communities. But the thing that's really has me anxious is the slide with the hopeless, depressed, and stressed. What can we do?
Well, I think that we're trying to do, as much as we can, guidance through connections with adults, through discussions of homework, and discussions of projects, and, and so on and so forth. And I think a certain, a good percentage of students said that it is homework that, and schoolwork, that has them stressed the most. Some are feeling that they're oversubscribed. They're working jobs. They're trying to be athletes. They're trying to be students. They're trying to sign up for AP classes. This trend has been going on for the last fifteen years with AP courses and kids like trying to push themselves to be the best that they possibly can, and then, and then breaking. And so I think through advisory classes, through wellness days, through, there was an opportunity yesterday. Today at the high school, I saw that one of the teachers during X block offered mindfulness classes. Any students who want some, want to come down and practice some mindfulness strategies and techniques, please do. Through these types of activities and initiatives, we're hoping that we can address some of this.
I mean, it's doubled since two thousand and seven.
And, and it was going up then, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Going along with what Paul just said, and first off, I want to thank you for this. This is valuable information. Really appreciate it. And I also want to state that in no way am I talking negative to the staff or to the administration in my comments now. But part of the data you shared with us is forty-eight percent of the students report feeling they are under much stress, most of the time or always. Twenty-five percent of the students report feeling sad or hopeless almost every day for two or more days a week. We saw this last year. Again, it's up. We know this. It's all over for all the reasons you just stated. We've, we heard that information last year. We've created a position for this. And it is my hope, through that position, your work, and everybody together, we hope to see these numbers drop. I mean, numbers are numbers. These are kids. They're very valuable, and, and the stress that's on them. I think it has to be a combined effort of educating the parents and us together to work together, to work on. These things are not going to go away. Society is putting this on us. We can't tell our students, "Don't become athletes. Don't become, take all these jobs," because they'll be left behind in the long run. But how to deal with it. And I think it's an important part to work in collaboration with the parents, that if somebody is stressed, to identify for us to help them right away before they go down. Thank you again for all your work.
And I think that the, the guidance departments are trying to do that through, through classroom forums and parent forums that they do. We're certainly trying to give parent strategies to do things through the regular parent forum group. And, and we're really trying to work with the students now and trying to give them some of these strategies.
With this new position, hopefully, there's a coordination, there's, working together.
I can say that she's, Sarah Bird has reached out to our coalition. She came to our first meeting of the year. I mean, she's very proactive in her role, and so already starting to make these relationships happen. So I'm, I'm seeing good things so far.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to echo similar things. One of the things I'm impressed with is we as a country and as a town have put resources into making sure that kids don't use tobacco, and don't use drugs, don't use alcohol, and we're seeing success. We're seeing those numbers go down. And that is a direct result of the kind of attention and the quality of the programs, such as the Coalition's programs. And we haven't quite yet done that with mental health issues, right? I mean, we've been reaching crisis proportion for the last ten years, not just in Arlington, but across the state, across the country. And we really, I think, as a country, haven't, haven't put that kind of attention to it. I am pleased to see that we, it seems like we've stopped the bleeding, at least. That the numbers, the three-page report that you gave us, aren't significantly worse than they were a couple of years ago. And in our previous reports, we had kept seeing the numbers jumping, big jumps, and it seems a little bit stopping the bleeding. I have to say, this is a complicated problem. You know, I was in incredibly high-stress high school, you know, my best in the country, but we only took one or two AP classes, right? And now, you know, minimum three, four, five, right, of a, of a student who wants to go to a good college. And so it's, it's a complicated problem. It's not just a school problem. It's a home problem. It's a, you know, a society problem. But that we really need to take this seriously.
So I think we were awarded a grant about five, six years ago now, the Success Grant, which I came to you and spoke to you about. And that really got us going at the elementary level. Unfortunately, we were not awarded it for the secondary level. But we were awarded it for the elementary level. And, you know, the implementations of some of those programs, and the fact that we now have a social-emotional learning person intact and can see those programs through, is really amazing. I mean, the responsive classroom, the open circle trainings, the tools-of-the-mind trainings, the social thinking. And the fact that three years ago, when the principals were setting their priorities for budget reasons, they all were in agreement that social workers need to stay. So, so I mean, we, we are putting resources in. We just hope the results will follow along.
I just, I'm also echoing the concern. I wanted to point out, I, I had seen the report. I didn't see your, your presentation, so I was just paging through the report. And one of the things I noticed was the proportion of students who reported not having eight or more hours of sleep was seventy-five percent. And that plus the other number, I can't find it right now, but that they were playing video games or a computer for three or more hours a day, makes me wonder whether some of the stress is coming from lack of sleep, and, you know, that the, all of these things are interacting.
Stress of being disconnected.
Or too connected.
I think they're just tired. I mean, in, in part. And I think some, I'm not saying, I'm not trying to diminish mental illness or anything. But I think being tired all the time is stressful. Trying to think and work and do everything you're trying to do as a high school student while you're tired all the time is stressful. And I just wonder how much of, I don't know how much of a factor is, but it, it certainly makes me wonder. Two other quick questions. One, I think it's really interesting that you're having these programs and forums, but speaking as someone who couldn't go last night because I had a prior commitment, I'm wondering, what are we doing to have the information available for parents who are interested but couldn't attend?
Okay, so if you just email us, we will send you any handouts that were definitely given out. When the, when the PowerPoint is shared with us, which it often is, I did not get the one from last night yet. But if the PowerPoint is, is offered to us, then I, I give that. We, we don't, we don't tape them. ACMI is not usually there. To be honest with you, there's a lot of quick Q and A during this as well. And I don't know if, how vibrant some of those Q and As would be, and how many, how many, how often parents would actually come out in front of a camera to ask the question they were going to ask, otherwise. But again, you know, it could be just redirected, the camera could be, but we don't, we don't tape them. But we are willing to share any handouts that are given, any PowerPoints that are shared with us, we, we give. So, and, and that happens often.
I also want to add that our coalition, something I didn't say, is that every month we have a newsletter. It's written by Karen Dillon, and she, for the previous month, spends the whole time reading scientific articles and new trends, different, you know, hot-button issues, and she'll put it in our coalition newsletter, which is sent out usually the first or second day of the month. And that is, right now, we have seven hundred and eighty-six subscriptions to it, subscribers. And, you know, we're always gaining, asking for more emails to add to the list. Some of you are, I believe, receive our newsletters, and, you know, there's a link on our website, and so we're always trying to promote that. Because we understand sometimes it's not as easy to have parents come to the events that we hold. I do want to say, last year, we had a parent forum called Screenagers. It was all about screen time. And there were about, so we had it at the Regent Theater, and we invited parents and their kids, and we had four hundred and fifty people show up. I mean, it was packed. There were kids. There was popcorn. It was great. And it really, I think, reinforced to our coalition, to the parent forum group, that we need to do more events that involve the whole family. Because sometimes parents might not be able to go because they can't find a babysitter, you know, don't want to leave their child home alone. So I think having more family-oriented events is definitely important.
And we do take feedback from parents at events such as that. And, and one of the big things that came out of that was, we need some help with the technology piece, end of it. Help us out, like here. How do we block out things? How do we do things? So that's why we called in other people to come in to just speak to parents last night.
But the, I'm sorry, I had one, the other thing I was wondering is, when, I've seen these surveys over the years, and I think they're really helpful. One question I've always wanted to see is an answer to, when are the kids using marijuana or, or any of the substances? Because, you know, as a grown-up who has now teenagers, as someone who sees lots of them here, I've been trying to think, you know, what are things that we can do to keep kids from doing that? And I'm thinking, you know, let's keep them busy. But I don't know, you know, is it after school that they get bored, or is it always on the weekends, or what?
Yeah, I can definitely speak to that. I feel like we ask this question every, every month at our meetings, which, you know, Cindy definitely comes to and participates in, so you can talk to her for any questions. But really, we find that students are participating in these behaviors, usually at night. And usually, well, there's two, two things. There's either under parent supervision, where parents are allowing parties in their basement because they find it, you know, more safe than if kids are home alone, which, for the record, is not safe. You are encouraging use by holding a party in your basement. It's against the law, and there's a lot of negative consequences that come from that. The second time students use it is in open spaces, so in different parks and woods around town. Again, because they try to, they want to leave, you know, their parents, their, they just want to be free. And, and so they'll have these parties in different woods. One good thing about our coalition is that we are a coalition. It's not just Ivy Schmalsky. It's not just Cindy Bouvier. It's the police, it's parents, it's everyone on board. And so we're always trying to talk to people about when this is happening. We had some students last year who were helping with our school resource officer. Anytime they would hear of some activity, they would tell him, and then he would, you know, tell the patrol. So there's all these activities that are happening. But what I can encourage you as a parent is, number one, to set really high expectations for your kids. Let them know that you disapprove of any substance use. Let them know that it does impact their brain, and really is detrimental to their, to their health. And number two, let them know that there's consequences for their use, so that if this happens, you know, they are able to be supported by you. And, you know, there's different studies out there on ways to get your, your child to listen to you and to, you know, you talk about safe words, you talk about all those things, really having an out. So if the student, if the child is somewhere where they don't want to be, but they're afraid because their friends are all there, and they don't want to be the kid that, you know, leaves home, leave, gets picked up from their parents at the party, you can use a safe word, text it, call it, and then the parent can come pick the child up. And it's like, "Oh, well, I, I thought we were picking you up at this time," so there's kind of no questions asked. And so really, and to really have those conversations as early as you can with your, you know, they say as, as young as age nine. So that's why I think it's really important that our life skills curriculum is being taught in the sixth grade. Because, you know, that's, we should be talking about it earlier, and we do, through different curriculum in the elementary schools. But we really want to have that conversation as early as we can. Thank you.
So no more questions. I'll just ask two questions. One, you had mentioned, Ivy, that a lot of the programming is dependent on one or two federal and state grants. Any of those in jeopardy in the coming year?
Yes, that's a great question. So right now, we are in year nine. Actually, on Monday, we are starting year nine of our ten-year grant. The last cycle, so next, so September two thousand and nineteen, September thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, we lose funding. Right now, we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and it comes through the federal government. We have several other small grants.
From the Department of Education, or?
From the Department of Health and Human Services.
Health and Human Services.
Yep, and then from there, it goes down to the Substance Abuse Mental Health Service Administration, and the Office of National Control of Drug Prevention, ONDCP.
Yeah.
Through the Drug-Free Communities Program. So we did receive, it's, there are two five-year grants that you could get, and we received our second one. And so now we're about to start year nine. So there's been, there's been discussion. I'm sure there'll be more discussion about ways that we can sustain our coalition. You know, we find that all this work is done by all these different departments, but you really need to have one person who is coordinating the efforts and making sure that it's happening. And I think that having a coalition director who's in charge of this, you know, outreach, this coordinating of efforts is really important. And so it's something that we've talked about in our department, and hopefully, we'll be able to talk to the school department, you know, in the next few months, to see kind of where we can support each other.
And this support really has to come from the broad spectrum of people that are on the coalition. It's important that it comes from the schools. It's important that it comes from the police. It's important that it comes from the school committee. Important that it comes from parents and students, and so on and so forth, and, and faith community. So it's, it's really a collaboration.
Well, I mean, I think, keep the school committee informed. Keep us informed if there's any, if the, if the federal funding is in jeopardy, because we have to talk about ways to keep it going.
Right, so I think, so I, I think jeopardy, right, I mean, it was just re-upped for this next year and for the year after. In fact, this year, they actually have funded the highest amount of coalitions ever in the history of the Drug-Free Communities Program. So our funding is still there, and, and still will be, at least in the next, next two years, which concerns Arlington. However, it's, it's that after, two thousand and nineteen, that's when I, you know, worry to see what, what's going to happen next. We have started to have those conversations, but support of the school committee would be fantastic in trying to sustain our coalition.
Okay, all right, thanks. And the last question is, you know, one thing that Pop, one connection that I make is the higher mental health risks and the number, the percentage of students who have at least one teacher or other adult in the school they can talk to. You know, that's a, that's a concrete thing that the, the high school can address. And we have, we have an advisory program, right, in high school?
Yes.
So I mean, that's something that can be, people can reflect on whether or not that's working, the way it should work. People can reflect on whether or not there's better ways to, what are, what are some ways to improve that number? So, because for the number of juniors to be that low, it means something isn't, isn't working. The advisory system isn't working for those kids, or they're not getting access to counselors the way they should. But something isn't, something, something internally, we have a good high school, a lot of great things going on, but something isn't working.
And this actually is the, the purpose, the mission, the goal of the Community Building Committee that Dr. Jangers is spearheading. As the coalition leader, I am a part of that committee, which is also nice, because I get to see the work of the community. And we've also called in a few representatives from the Arlington Human Rights Commission and the Arlington Police Department, again, to try to get more of a community effort. Because you're right, it's not going away anytime soon, so we have to build, build this community building as much as we can.
The community effort is important, but I'm talking about inside the school itself.
Inside the, yeah.
Inside the school, that's, the leadership of the school.
Relationship.
Relationship.
They've got to think about, okay, how do we build better relationships between some of the students who aren't, the thirty-two percent of the students that aren't connecting with, with adults in the building. What do we got to do differently?
I agree.
Inside the school. I suspect that number reflects a lot of the kids who are most active in the school. So if you play a sport, you probably, you know, you probably have an adult to talk to. If you're in a club, and you're highly active in that club, you've probably got an adult you're comfortable with. I suspect it's the kids that are not as engaged in the school that feel that way. That's often the case.
And the building committee this year is working on gathering that, that type of data.
Yeah.
It's important to note, oh, sorry. It's important to note, too, that, that's only, so it's sixty-six percent was what was reported among all Middle Sex League schools. So, I mean, we are a little higher, but it is kind of typical to what's, right, it's not a, I mean, I still want, I still care about that.
Yeah, you don't want to, you don't want to stop there.
Thirty percent, but...
But I think it's, I suspect if you really, if you, if there were a way to unpack all that data, and you look at that thirty percent, you would find it's, I'm guessing, some of the less engaged students. That's often the case.
Yes.
Because they just have fewer adults that they're interfacing with on a regular basis in an informal way. All right. Great presentation. Thank you, as always.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you for having us.
Okay. Dondrea Maxwell, thank you for waiting. We're going to move around the agenda, and we're all behind again. And we're going to have Starks. Cindy, you, you chair this committee.
Yes, I do.
So, thanks, guys. That was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Dondrea, come on up. Dondrea is our nominee to be the school committee's representative to the Arlington Human Rights Commission. I'm going to turn it over to Professor Starks, who chairs the subcommittee. You sit down, yes.
We're friendly.
Go ahead.
So, at our last meeting of the Community Relations Subcommittee, we did have amazingly ten applications for our HRC position. And I really want to thank everyone who submitted their resumes and their letters. We had many, many great candidates, but in the end, we felt that Dondrea was definitely kind of, kind of the person that we were hoping could, we could send to HRC. And so... And so, I am excited that she is our nominee, and our motion is that we all approve her nomination to that committee tonight.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Starks, a second by Mr. Hayner. So let's discussion, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to say something. So, one of the things that I think is really important for the school committee is that the nominee to the Human Rights Committee be somebody who can be a liaison between schools and, and the Human Rights Committee and the community. And one of the things I think is exciting about you is that you have three kids.
I do.
An elementary school kid, a middle school kid, and a high school kid.
Yes.
So your eyes and ears are going to be everywhere. I also want to echo what Ms. Starks said, that we had ten candidates, many of them very highly qualified, and we were impressed by both your commitment to the, the role, I think, that you, you will be taking on, and, and your experience and things that you can add, so.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, this is the first time we're meeting, because I'm not on the Subcommittee. Thank you for doing this. Could you just give us a thirty-second story of how you got here and what makes you want to do this work?
Yeah, so I'm Dondrea Maxwell. I've been in Arlington about thirteen years, moved here with my husband, Joseph. He actually is, I'm from Texas, he's from Mississippi, but we moved here because of his job. So I was a stay-at-home mom for a few years, got to know the area. We basically, we lived in Cambridge maybe two weeks and then moved to Arlington, so we've been in Arlington this entire time, down in East Arlington, and then moved to Stratton. I'm here because my children have been in the school district here, and they, they've done really, really well. In fact, my youngest was not at Stratton for the first three years, and we decided this year that she would go back to Stratton because we thought that was the best place for her. I am very active and supportive of them, so I've always tried to be in the classroom, on the enrichment committee. I do know a lot of the teachers in Mr. Hannah at Stratton, and so it's very important to me, their overall well-being. So I'm here today to, to try to get involved, and I feel like Arlington is my home now, and I'd like to be a part of what's happening, so that's why I'm here today.
Thank you, and thank you for agreeing to do this for us.
Thank you.
Any more questions or discussion? So we'll take a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it unanimously, congratulations. Go to work, have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we're excited. Okay, now we're going to talk about the superintendent's goals and the evaluation process. I'm going to let Kathy speak, and then I'll chime in.
To talk about change around, so I'm going to talk a little bit since the parents were here calling, they talk about TAs.
Sure, watch me do that.
And then I can get into this other part.
Yeah. All right, so we're talking about TAs now, now you got to...
Someone else came in late because she was at our curriculum night and missed the public...
Sure, come on up, sure.
No, I haven't.
Yeah.
Well, I don't want to do it, I already did it.
Thank you guys very much for having me. I appreciate the time.
Just tell us your name.
My name's Michelle Bazergan.
Okay.
My son, it's his first year over at Pierce Elementary School. We moved last August from San Francisco. Previous to moving here, we had been homeschooling. When we moved here, we kind of had the jackpot. We have the school that we can walk to, we have wonderful neighbors, but I found in homeschooling, connecting with other parents of kids my age was really challenging. So I chose this year to try to go to Pierce and give it a try. I was having, I had some concerns as a parent about going to public school. The ratio of kids to teachers was one thing. Hearing that the school was growing by a third class was a little bit intimidating, but I've also heard wonderful things from my community members, the people in my neighborhood about the school, and we were excited to try it. One of the concerns that kind of came up as we were trying it out was that the teacher's assistant wouldn't be available on a full-time basis. Today, we went on a, you can hear my nervousness, but today, we went on a field trip, and I volunteered as a chaperone. I really want to try to be a part of the community and, and take advantage of the people that we have around us, who are wonderful, and the teachers are as well. We went on the field trip, we had a great time. We had three parents as chaperones, we picked apples, the day was beautiful, the kids were great. We had eight children, fifth graders, their fifth grade buddies, which is a really awesome program, with their kindergarten buddies. We had a really wonderful time, but I've also volunteered as, in the library, to do with their class. To see the interaction between the teacher's assistant and the kids, it just, it seems like such a necessary and vital role. Today, at curriculum night, they talked about how, in the future, when they do reading, and the literacy programs, and the math programs, that they're going to have the opportunity each week, the students, to meet with a teacher, to go over what their challenges were, what their successes were, what they want to work on for the next week. When thinking about how a teacher's assistant may not be available, that was concerning. There's, there are also, like, in an emergency situation, where, how would one teacher get twenty-one students out of the third floor to safety? We don't have earthquakes here, like we did in San Francisco, but if there's ever an emergency or a concern, I just wanted to be, like, feel comfortable in knowing that all the kids are taken care of. Another thing, yeah, it just, I really appreciate having the opportunity to come here tonight. My husband took off of work early. I got friends to watch my child while I went to curriculum night to listen. Met my husband at home, he took over the bedtime responsibilities, I found parking, I came here. And I, but I appreciate being able to listen and hear about all the work that you guys are doing as a committee. I never would have guessed that you guys deal with all of these issues. I thought it would have been a lot of blah, 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 and are we going to use this toilet paper versus this toilet paper? But it was enlightening to hear about the youth risk survey, the testing, and how well the students are doing. It's something that makes me feel more confident in making a choice to do, to public school versus homeschooling. But there is that concern, hearing about how students are stressed, how they may not feel connected to, or have an adult that they can go out to reach out to as support. Right now, his schooling, kindergarten for me, I might, I considered having him go to public school at maybe seven years old. I felt like at five years old, there's still room for me to soak in the cuteness, there's still room for me to observe how he learns, to, I want to protect his curiosity, I want to protect his love of learning. I see that he can have that opportunity to do that in homes, or in public school. I see the relationships that he's making. But again, I want that relationship with the adult, someone else who he's getting, who's going to care for him, to be strong. And if he's with them part-time, with one of those people part-time, I want him to know that he can go to an adult if he has a concern. It's a big transition. He melts down, he melted down last week and this week after school. He's held it together when he's at school, he's doing really well. But I talked with parents on the way to the field trip about how they're dealing with this transition. They went from three kids, or three kids to one teacher, maybe in preschool for half a day, maybe four kids to one teacher. And now they're twenty-one kids to a teacher and a teacher's assistant. And again, to hear that the teacher's assistant will go to part-time. Before coming to this meeting, I was wondering about what the commitment was to the students. Hearing what you guys are doing with the youth risk survey, like, hearing your concerns about your students, it's, I appreciate it a lot, and it definitely, again, influences my decision about going to public school or not. I'm committed to doing whatever I can to give my son the best, as all the parents are, and whatever I can do to help, whether it's volunteering, coming here.
All right, thank, thank you very much. I'm going to let the superintendent talk about the TAs. All right, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay, appreciate it.
And I go away?
Yep. Thank you very much, yep.
So, for people that are new to kindergarten experience, and it is a very difficult transition from going from preschool to kindergarten, we recognize that. Years ago, and I think this dates back until the, around two thousand, we had a kindergarten grant through the state, and that's grant provided the funding for half-day kindergarten teaching assistance. Two years ago, that, that grant was, was eliminated, and so we had to make a decision as a district at that point, if we were going to fund half-day kindergarten TAs out of the operating budget, making a choice, which was about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar choice, in not funding other things that we also felt that we needed. And we made that choice, and we've continued to make that choice. And so, kindergarten halftime TAs are in our budget. Would we like to have full-time? Yes, but it, again, it's balancing out all of the needs of the district, and we'll be doing that as we get into the budget season. The vast, vast majority of our classes in the district are in the range of twenty to twenty-five. There's, you know, some outliers, a little bit lower, a couple a little bit higher, but that's where pretty much the range of our students are. In kindergarten, we try to, you know, have those numbers be in the low twenties, and for the most part, that's the case. I think this year, Dallin, which went from four kindergartens to three, have a little bit higher numbers, and so, and when, when the kindergarten gets into that twenty-five level, that's one, we say, that, that's just too high. It may not be high enough that we would go to another classroom, but we have a full-time TA. And, and in fact, there are a number of full-time TAs in the district in those kinds of situations. The, in fact, at Pierce, there's one full-time kindergarten TA as well, as well as the two halftime. So really depends, it's really driven by the numbers, and also driven by sometimes the requirements under an IEP. So we do have TAs full-time, but they, it's, it's, as I said, number-driven and IEP-driven if they, if they are, if they're at a certain end of the range. So, you know, this is, this is a discussion that will come up again in the budget year this year, if that's something that, as we look at all of the needs, and we usually have millions of dollars of requests, and are able to find a small fraction of that where that prioritization occurs. In every elementary school, there is a teaching assistant that is, works with the Special Education Liaison, and as well as there is a building sub. In, in the large schools, there may be two building subs that can, you know, in difficult situations, be used in a particular class, which is exactly what happens. So we have, we do have a, pretty much of a, an equity formula for how we do this, because we want, we want parents of the schools, the teachers in the schools, and certainly administrators to feel that this is a very thoughtful and fair process for how teaching assistants are assigned. So that's a, that's sort of a summary. I don't know if anybody wants to ask any other questions about that.
You've all heard this from me before, using just straight numbers, body numbers, to me doesn't, as, as a former classroom teacher, does not equate to the need. I appreciate the, the number of twenty-five being a need for a full-time TA, but some classrooms that have twenty-two, twenty-three students, the time necessary to communicate with those twenty-two, twenty-three students can be equal to what's the time of thirty students. Each child needs to be assessed to where they are, and I've talked about a weighted classroom to look at, to make the determination. We have, these two parents here are talking about the Pierce school, the classes from the numbers you gave us last week were twenty-three, twenty-three, and twenty-one. For whatever reason, and I'm not trying to get the principal in trouble, the principal thought it was necessary to have a full-time TA at the beginning of the year to make that Stratton has two classes of twenty-four and one class of twenty, according to the numbers. Of all the kindergarten numbers that we see here, only one class is listed at twenty-five. Now Pierce has one, two, three other classes of twenty-five, four classes of twenty-five. They're in the upper grades. The, I'm just concerned, all the, all the work that's being required by the teacher to do assessments and do a true evaluation, if he or she is running that classroom, and they have a whole classroom of students, those students have to be occupied by a TA while the teacher does that professional assessment. Otherwise, if they're trying to do that professional assessment on a one-on-one basis, which necessarily has to be done at that level, they can't do it unless the students are occupied with someone else. And I don't think we can afford to depend on a halftime person, because you've got a full program going. I've said this before, and it needs to be made a priority, and I'm going to make it a number-one priority on the budget going forward this year. If we can find it, I think it's very important to adjust our teaching assistants at the lower levels to mitigate any future problems, to find them as soon as possible. Schools that have full-time teaching assistants at kindergarten and first-grade level have far less IEPs at the upper levels, because issues are being discovered early and being dealt with. Thank you.
Cindy? Do you want to go by Jennifer?
She does. I'll go by Jennifer. I usually go by Cindy, but I think it was her.
Thank you. So since I've been on the committee, which I know is not as long as, as many people, this has been a top priority of both parents and teachers. And I think it's important to remind the public how much this is going to cost, and, and when we go to the town, and when we, and when we go for our next override, operation override, to remember about the, the things that we think are a priority, and how much they're going to cost our, you know, taxpayers, and our parents, and just sort of, you know, there are ways to potentially push for the things that we need, not maybe this month, but over time, and this is, certainly has been shown to be a very high priority for both parents and teachers.
Led?
Thank you. So, again, just providing more background, during the budget cycle, we do talk with our principals about what their needs are coming up for the year. Historically, we have only had halftime TAs in, in kindergarten, it's gone relatively well, even when people were paying three thousand dollars to go full-time, full-day kindergarten, they still only had halftime TAs. But, but mainly because of the tools in the mine curriculum, which you correctly pointed out, the principals did recognize the need to, or at least the desire to have full-time TAs. That's been on their requests for the past two years, but as an, as an administrative team, we, we can't fund everything on their, on their wish list. So as an administrative team, they did identify other priorities, and I'm a little bit bothered by the lack of communication from your principal about that process, because last year, two years ago, they came to us with the request for full-time kindergarten aides, it didn't get funded, and I think maybe social workers got funded, or something that the team decided was more important got funded. Last year, they came to us again, again, it was on the list, but it wasn't, again, it wasn't a priority. And I specifically said to them, why isn't this a priority? Why is, why is, and it turned out this year, it was assistant principals and behavioral support professionals. And they did explain to us why that was their priority. At some of the larger schools, the principal was dealing with so many behavior issues, he doesn't have time to run, he or she doesn't have time to run the building. So, that was a decision that the administrative team made, and I wish that would, that had been communicated to you, to understand why we haven't been able to fund those positions. But going forward, I agree with my colleagues, that it is something we should continue to look at, and, and I hope that this year, there will be consideration given in certain circumstances of not, not, we're not going to be able to have a full-time TA at every classroom, that would cost two-hundred thousand dollars district-wide. But maybe an additional TA at each school, we've done that in the past, where there, you know, here, there might be special needs because the classroom's up on the third floor, I, I don't know, but hopefully, there will be some flexibility. We'll be getting more, better numbers about how much money we actually do have available very shortly, and hopefully, we can take a look at that.
I know, in the past, we've asked for and received a listing of how many TAs, you know, how many students are in kindergarten classes, and how many TAs they have, and what percentage of time that they're in there. I mean, it's, it's been a number of years, but we've gotten that in the past, and I'm just wondering if we could get that again this time, because I'm having a hard time keeping track of where there's halftime... where there's halftime, where there's, and, and I just might be sure there aren't any classrooms that have none and, um...
There are no classrooms that don't, that do not have a halftime TA. We do, we have assigned building subs to schools so that they can be, um, assigned where the needs are. And that could be a kindergarten, it could be another grade where there, as, as Mr. Haner was talking about, sometimes there are more challenging groups of kids. You know, being able to give more of that kind of support at the, at the discretion of a principal is something that I think we would all agree would like to be able to do. And requests like that do come in and we work on that just to make sure that we can do it. And we've had a number of those already this year and have funded them. So, um, we can certainly, but I think, let me see if I understand what you're looking for. You wanna know how many TAs are in each building and where they're assigned?
I wanna know how many, yeah.
How many kindergarten?
How many kindergarten, how many students are in classrooms? How many TAs and how long they have TAs for? You know, I guess halftime or full-time or, or whatever.
We can do that.
And if there's any, I don't know how to get past confidentiality, but I, I don't wanna overlook someone who is in there because it's a special education, you know, assistant or something like that. I, I don't know how to handle that, but if you can think about if there's any way to do that.
Okay, wait, I'm not gonna, yeah, so.
Dealing with that, my, my thing for clarification would be full-time TAs that have nothing to do with IEPs. Because if a person is, is a TA for an IEP, they belong to that IEP. They don't belong to the classroom and I hope they're not being used as part of that group. The, the TA should be assigned to the kindergarten as a regular classroom. Any teaching assistants that are part of an individual education plan belong to that individual education plan and should not be shared for a whole class. That's my.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna leave it there. The school committee doesn't, you know, we're not burning on a budget tonight. Paul, you wanna say?
Yeah, I just wanna say, you know, we plan as best as we can. Two things about kindergarten, one, it's the hardest thing to do because we don't have a reliable baseline. How many kids are gonna have in kindergarten any given year in any given school? Because it's an entry grade, uh, numbers can increase and decrease, so we make our best guess. And we did sit here, uh, in January, February, March as we're going through the budget, looking at our priorities. Another thing is kindergarten's a very challenging grade to teach. It requires a lot of attention on part of kids. Though there are times in the day where the TA is not as critical as another so that, you know, while halftime is not optimal, I mean, uh, through good scheduling and planning with the TAs, uh, and I understand you've got one full-time and two halftime on the kindergarten right now? Is, is that what I'm hearing?
At Pierce?
Yeah.
We have two halftime and one full-time.
Yeah, so you've got two halftime and a full-time spread among three classes. So it's not optimal, but it's, it's.
Usually, in that kind of situation where you have one, the, the, the afternoon, that teaching assistant will support three classes depending upon their request. See, the thing, one of the things that happens in kindergarten is that's often where we try to schedule the specials. So they may be out of music at our, that's, we try to do that in kindergarten because of this TA situation.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not easy. I mean, we're, we're dealing with very limited resources and we're doing the best we can with the priorities we have along with the fact that the enrollment in this district went up three and a half percent last, this year. So, um, i- it's a challenge. Uh, and I would like to see full-time TAs in all the classrooms. Uh, but the question is gonna happen in January and February and March when we do our planning. Uh, how much money do we have and how do we spread it out? It, it's not easy.
All right, we have to leave it there. Uh, so we're gonna talk now about the superintendent's evaluation. And you wanna go, you wanna start off?
Yes, um, well, what we wanna talk about is the, um, this is the point in the year where you want to have all the evidence for the district goals, for the, um, my specific goals and the goal that you picked out. So last year, we, we did this by putting them in NOVUS and I think there were a lot of, um, issues that couldn't follow them, uh, 'cause I think that just the way they get sequenced. So we've gone back to, um, what was a sort of a tried and true sort of years ago, we tried this way. There is a lot of evidence and for all of the, for all of the goals, including, you know, the ones that are specifically, um, that you wanna look at for me, as well as, I remember last year in the retreat, we, um, we looked at the, the four standards and decided upon what the evidence would be for those four standards. So what, I think the most efficient way to deal this is I'm gonna send you a memo with a lot of this information, but the, really the point of tonight is the, we have all of it in a box over there. In fact, there's even more on top. 'Cause when we do district goals, we look at this as, um, for all of the goals. This is a very much of a team effort. We, we, we wanna through line down to school improvement plans, down to individual, individual goals. So we've been collecting the, the evidence over the last couple of months and I really wanna compliment Karen. She's done a terrific job of, you know, working with all the principals and department chairs to, to provide, you know, to provide some, um, really relevant, um, insights through evidence of, of what the kind of work that's been going on this past year relative to these specific goals. So, um, we still have a few things that even have come in just the last day or so. So this box will be ready on Monday. You could even see it tomorrow, but it, we still have to put a few more things in. Sometime when you're up for, um, a subcommittee meeting, if you wanted to look through this. To scan all of that would be huge. It, it would just be a huge amount of, um, uh, information to put out electronically. You may find you don't like it this way and we'll re, redo it, you know, a different way next year. I just wanna have some feedback on the process. So I'll give you a sort of a summary of all of this in terms of what to expect, but you should, you should have this all done out. It's very, I thought it was, it's very clear in terms of each one of the goals and the evidence that's, that's there. So I can give you some highlights 'cause I think really, you know, we could talk about that.
Just for clarification, the document that we were given, uh, dated January twenty-sixth, two thousand and seventeen from CIAA lists the evidence and things of that nature. And that's what we all agreed on, so if that's what's in there, that, that's fine.
That's what's in there.
It's in the box.
That's in the box. It's the issue of how to get it to you, whether we were gonna do it by.
I'm comfortable with coming in and going through it.
Okay, that's fine, 'cause that's what we thought would be best this year.
Just curious, is it, when it comes down, example, it says professional practice goal, that said evidence, the physical design plan, I guess, for the Gibbs on it. Is it marked as evidence for professional practice goal? Great.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm fine with that too. What we didn't have last year that I think would be helpful is a real narrative and sort of highlighting things. You know, we just had sort of a document dump, which, and the document dump is helpful, but we didn't sort of have, you know, the report.
Well, I gave you, I gave you a report. I, I, again, we keep refining how, I, I did send you a report electronically. No, I did last year too.
Oh, oh, yeah, but we, I don't, I, I just felt that the reports or the highlights, the narrative was insufficient and that's what I felt.
So I'm gonna try it a little bit different way this year, we'll see how this goes. Um, that might, and be good to get your feedback on it. There is just so much. Now, the one thing I will remind you about, one of the goals had to do with the high school plan for the educational plan that we need to submit to MSBA. We did the preliminary one, which was a part of all the documentation that had to happen in module one. But what we discovered, if you recall, is that there was a process, you had to go through the OPM in terms of time, then designer. In fact, I was gonna give you an update on, on buildings tonight. So we were, that whole goal has to be shifted to this year because that report won't be done until after we get the designer and we go through the next few months after that. So it's just, uh, there's a few that are, are like that, that are gonna be continued out. And I'll, you know, I'll mention that in the highlights for each one.
Okay, Kersey, do you wanna?
I'm just putting it out there, I'm not real enthusiastic about this box approach. I interact with the documents. My work time is usually like ten o'clock or later at night. And I, I mean, when I say interact, I mean I highlight or I write comments on or, or any questions. I'm also concerned about our ability to refer back to something and let everyone else know and then be able to find it, you know, 'cause we're all like, are we all gonna run into the box and then we shuffle, we hand it up and down? I understand there's a lot of documents. I'm, I can wait and see what your report says, 'cause that may make a difference in how, um, I feel about it. 'Cause I did feel there wasn't a good connection last time between the evidence and what was being shown with the evidence. But I'm not a fan of the box so far.
Two things on process, can we go to that?
Well, um.
I'll wait.
Yeah, why don't you wait on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just wanna share Kersey's, uh, lack of enthusiasm for dealing with the box and having to physically be here to go through it. Though I, I think that I'm willing to give anything a shot once. We never, we never seem to be able to land on the perfect solution.
It's, it's, it's hard.
So, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll play this way. I'll cry a little and maybe, maybe at the conclusion of this process, we can figure out some summary way to have cover sheets or some, some way to have something electronic that we can work off of and have the depth of, of a bunch of stuff being in the box that we can refer to.
I wonder, can I?
Yeah.
I wonder if, um, if you had, 'cause you have the list of things that, that are listed in terms of deliverables. If there's anything in particular you want, we could scan it and put it in NOVUS, we could do that. It's just that we were looking at the, at the, how much there is. There's just too much to put through that process. What we could do is, is do maybe just, you know, the three. But one of the three goals that you particularly wanted to look at was the high school plan, which has to be delayed. We could do the other two and just put those two through, all the evidence on that, that could work. We talked about that at the beginning of the week, doing something like that. That, that's an option too.
There's, there's no good answer to this because I, the other thing is I've got an inherent core belief that the work of the superintendent should be focused on teaching and learning in kids and not catering to school committee. So I don't wanna be spending a lot of time making this stuff happen or use an extraordinary amount of district personnel and resources, uh, going through this when those resources are desperately needed elsewhere in the district. So I'm willing to go along and, and play and, and, and figure out how to make this work and come up with suggestions for refining for next year. Uh, we, we, that's just what we have to do.
All right, yeah.
Just going on the process.
Oh, you're on the pro, okay, so.
On the box.
For the box.
All right, tell them about the box.
So you gotta take out of the box.
So, so I do think I like the suggestion that we, CIAA came up with a list of evidence that we were looking for, um, that we just focus on those, which is a subset of the box, I assume. And that that gets sent to NOVUS, that we can sort of access it.
It is the box.
Everything?
But the design plan could be, you can give us a link for the design plan.
Some, some of the items like the design plan.
Yeah.
Obviously, you're not, it's already, it's already out there on the internet, but obviously, we don't need to scan that to NOVUS. But some of the things like the report about Maple.
Right.
Would be, I think, very, very interesting to all of us.
Okay.
And have all of us have to come here and read it, you know. So I think with some discretion, you can think, well, this is just a summary. This is a list of all my meetings, I can scan that. There, there might be some short documents that you can provide. Either by NOVUS or by email.
All right, well, we'll take a look at that tomorrow and, okay, all right.
Are we talking, okay, so the, the, we was talking about the process, so, since we jumped to the process, you were gonna give a summary of where you were at, but.
I will.
Okay, you will after this. Okay, so the process is Karen and I are gonna populate the evaluation tool. I didn't talk to you about this, but this we have to do. We're gonna populate the evaluation tool. You, you have a sample from last year and then give it to everybody sometime next week, okay? At some point in the middle of next week, I don't know when. And then you have until the weekend, final meeting of October, which is the twenty
Something.
Sixth, seventh, eighth, whatever that is.
Sure.
Twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, October twenty-sixth, to get it back to Karen. Um, and then Karen and I will compile it into one document that, and then we report out as a committee on November ninth, I think it is.
That's the first meeting.
Yep. And then the sixteenth is the second one, 'cause then we have Thanksgiving. So I think it's, yeah, I think it's the ninth. So, yeah, and so that's, that's the process. We will, we'll populate that document, we'll make sure it's as, as clear as it can be. Give it to everybody and then you can start filling it out. Yeah.
So a question, we've done different things. Are we going to read sort of the total summary, you know, as the most important? Are we gonna read summaries for each section?
I don't know, I haven't thought of it.
Anyway, to let us know, 'cause it'll, we'll fill it out differently depending on.
Well, I mean, I think that. Take a look and see how you, how you create the document.
Well, it's the same document we've used.
Yeah, but you just sort of.
You're not gonna do as much, are you?
If you could give us guidance about what you're thinking and then we can then sort of create our document based on what.
I mean, I think that with the, the practice in the past has been that there's a summary sheet that gives the average that, that's already ready. There's, everyone gets a chance to read their report or not. You can decline and that's really it. So you're basically reading your.
The summary.
You're reading your evaluation summary, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause then there's these subsections, which sometimes we've focused on and sometimes.
I sort of, I, I would probably just give people the choice. That would be my style, that if you wanna read the other subsections.
But all at once?
Yeah, oh, yeah, it'll be all at once. Every member will get their turn, we'll go, Len.
That's helpful.
Yeah, we'll go right from, yeah, that, yeah. Okay, from one ball guy to the bottom of the ball guy. Sorry, Len. Go ahead.
I would ask that the document that you come up with be done in a Word document, not a PDF, so that we can interact with it?
Oh, it'll be done in a Word document.
Okay, and the second thing, just for my sake and remind everybody, the consideration of what we're dealing with is from July first, two thousand and sixteen through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Correct, it's the last.
Anything that we've acquired between the past four, three months, that's where it gets messy. Some of us do, some of us don't, so.
It could be evidence of what happened in the school year that was delivered later, but the evaluation period is
Right.
the school year.
Right, that's right.
Summer projects are not part of this deal, this year's, last year's.
Right, right.
That's all, thank you.
Right, it's a fine line, 'cause some of the stuff is, you're working on it all year and you finish in the summer. Dr. Bo, you wanna give, so we've talked about the process, do you wanna give any overview or do you wanna?
I think probably the best, I think they want it in writing, so we'll do it that way.
Superintendent's gonna do a memo, we're gonna get it sometime next week. Hopefully, let's time it then, let's time Kathy's memo with your, you and I putting together this, uh, evaluation tool. We'll get it all out in one, one thing. All right. Now, we're on to the superintendent's report, we already heard half of it, we talked about the TAs. Now, we're gonna talk about building projects and other things.
Building projects, that's always on the, the agenda.
'Cause we got none of those.
We have a lot of building projects. We do.
We are full-time construction management people now.
Yeah, I don't know if a day goes by, I don't have some meeting on buildings, really. And sometimes there, like Mondays, there'll be half the day on building projects. So at any rate, uh, but, the good news is the building projects are moving forward. The, the high school, we are in the process right now of, um, selecting, well, collaborating with MSBA to select a designer for the high school. We went through a process where we, we solicited applications and we had six applications. The firms who are all, all of these firms are very highly respected, um, firms that probably could do the job and do it well. I'll tell you the names, 'cause it's not, it's public information and these are in alphabetical order. Arrow Street, DRA, Finegold, Flansburgh, HMFH and Castle Bose. So it's a process of doing research references and we will be, we will be having meetings with, uh, MSBA this month. They'll, and we, they have thirteen people and we have three. And we, they have thirteen people and we have three representatives that will go. It's required that superintendent, the town manager, and the committee voted for our chair to be with the third member, so that will be happening. In that process, we will have the, it'll, it'll start getting whittled down, I don't know how many of these, it could be three, possibly four, maybe two, it's hard to say until we go through the process. We'll actually come and interview at MSBA for this, so I, by the end of October at the latest, we should have a designer selected. And then once that happens, then all these other things will begin happening in which the next part of the feasibility feasibility study, so that's a big milestone and then we'll be moving forward from that. And it will seem like we're going a little bit faster as we get, as we, as that happens. So that's, that's a good spot to be in. The Gibbs Building is, you heard, you saw some of it, it is in the, it has been demoed, we.
Walked by it the other day, it's like, you can see it straight through it.
Yeah.
There's no windows, there's nothing inside, I know, it's like, wow.
We're doing major, it's a major overhaul of that building. I think it's, after they did an analysis, they just realized there's more things that need to be done, it's just. But we, but concurrently what's going on with the building, we're working on furniture and equipment. There's still more to be done in terms of design, interior design, so that's, a lot of that work was done last year with the Gibbs Advisory. And then we've been on furniture and equipment, that is all department share work, and that, there's been significant amount of time spent on that over the last month and a half, and will continue. In fact, if you go into my office tonight, it's actually quite funny. They asked where all the samples would need to be delivered, and they're delivered in my office, so there's there's all these desks and chairs, and you're welcome, we put comment sheets on each piece.
Looks like some kids got in detention, it looks like a detention room.
Yeah, there's just all these chairs, and it's not only in the outer office, but it's in the inner office, and so, we're going to, I've invited administrators in my hour to come in and do the, you know, the seat tests. So that is moving forward quite, quite well. Hardy, that is also, as you know, that there's, there's, there's been a shift in the time that the project will be completed. But I have to say, there, there's going to be a presentation to the school council at Hardy on Tuesday to, just to show them where we are this, at this point with designs, and I think that, you know, I will, I want to compliment the architects, they've really thought of some very creative things, which we need to get them in here to, to show you as well. And I, we'll try to set that up sometime in the next month or so, that she, so you can see that some of the designs that, that are going to happen. We'll talk about that when, when they actually come. So Stratton is in the last stages of what we need to complete, we're at the punch list time. I think the big issue right now is getting that landscaping done and, you know, the irrigation back in place, but that, that's in, that's in very good shape. Thompson, well, I still don't have a date yet for a temporary CO. We, we probably won't even have the other one for a little bit longer, there are some, there's still some holdups with it, but compared to where, when I was talking to you two weeks ago about this, been major progress. It really is very close to having students be able to move into the classrooms. But there are still some things that need to be, there's some issues that have come up, and in fact, there's been issues that come, have come up this week that may delay this a little bit longer. Fortunately. But to Thompson's credit, they've been moving forward and, and today our assistant superintendent, Mr. McNeil, was able to be, spend the day down there. And he would attest to the fact that all is going well.
It's going very well, very impressive staff. And I got a chance to meet parents during the arrival process and also visit classrooms and see all the wonderful things that are going on and also interact with the students, which was very joyful for me, as I'm getting, as last year I was a elementary principal, so I had to.
He's been a withdrawal.
Yeah, yeah.
The kids are cute.
That was my connection, so it was a, it was a wonderful day.
And, and we also have hired someone to do, when we have more contractors in there, to do security surveillance, so that feels a lot better, too. Unfortunately, there's not been enough workers there in the last couple of days to, to warrant it, but, you know, it, it's going to be done and, and, and Ruthie Bennett and I, we, we meet at least once a week regularly on all of the capital and building issues. And the one thing that we were talking about this week is that when it is done, we do feel that it's going to be, have been done well. So it will be, we don't have any worries in that, in that regard. So.
Thompson's like a P, when you ask a stu, a PhD student when, when she's going to finish, she'll say, well, that could be twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Oh, it's a little frustrating.
Don't even use those numbers.
And then, and then we're going to have to figure out actually what the move, how the move is going to occur.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have really any vacations coming up on the horizon, and I certainly don't want to wait until vacation to be able to, to do this. So we'll, we'll, we'll figure that out, we already have some ideas how that's going to happen. So.
One thing?
Yeah.
Who's moving?
Who's moving?
Yeah.
The ones that are.
Which, which grades, is there a, a pattern to this, do, are we putting one classroom of each grade over there or?
Depends on, it depends on the floor, there's going to be fifth grade classrooms on the top floor, and I believe there's going to be some third grade in the second, so it's really trying to get the, the grades all in the same area. So who will physically have to move are three fifth grade classrooms.
Fifth graders are portable.
That's where they are now.
They're in the, they're in the portables, and, and we also in one art room. So we're in an art in a cart right now.
They're going to miss the portables, the fifth graders.
Well, dear, you know, they are a little bit, I'm sure they're not unhappy the fact that they've gone through this heat wave. I've heard that there's a little nostalgia for the portables this last week or two up at Stratton.
Yeah, we have six of them and they're the only ones that have not been had classrooms of ninety-five degrees.
Yes, the classrooms have been so hot and this humid, this, this week was really tough because of the humidity of.
We could beat Singapore if we had the air conditioning.
I just want to ask one quick question about Gibbs, is there any way that we could get some of the samples over to Odison so kids could give input?
Yeah.
But furniture?
That would be fun.
On the furniture?
Let the sixth graders try it out.
Yeah, that's what, because I'm thinking sixth graders come in a lot of different sizes and most of them are smaller than adults.
I can tell you the chair they all want. It's the only one that's got wheels on it, we all want the wheelchair.
They come down to, that's not a bad idea, actually, let me think about that, if we can get some input.
Yeah, if you could just bring them and, you know, even if the kids stay after school, they sit and try and make their comments.
We are in a pretty tight timeframe on this, but let me see what we can do about that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the idea. The only, the only other thing I, I just want to recognize.
Excuse me, just one thing, those aren't the ones that are going to be using it, though, just be aware of that, the, the fifth graders that are going to.
Yeah, but that, that's the prototype, the, the sixth graders are, are the target audience.
They become sixth graders.
So this is your sixth graders, so if you want to find out the opinion of the sixth grader, you ask a sixth grader.
Good luck.
We have the smartest sixth graders in Massachusetts.
You'd think.
All right.
I want to thank and recognize the jazz band and the magical singers for their spectacular performance at Town Day.
Yeah, they were great.
They were great, and a good, a good number, if not close to half, of the jazz band are ninth graders. And so they only had a couple of weeks to practice and they did, they were just amazingly, amazingly good. So, want to recognize them, and I also want to recognize the high school for undertaking this very creative art unification project, it's just unfortunate that we got deluged with rain, that collapsed it. I think the, the students were disappointed, but somebody made a, a very interesting metaphor, but they said, well, the thing that happened is that the poles came down, the structure, but the web held together. I thought that was a lovely idea, because it did, it did hold together. So that's my report.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to move on to the consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of minutes, school committee regular meeting, September fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, approval of warrant, number eighteen oh five four, total amount, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, ninety-four cents, dated September fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen. We have a motion. Motion, please.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it unanimously. Okay, vote delegate and resolutions for the MSC annual business meeting. The meeting will be held on Wednesday, November first, at three fifteen PM, we send a delegate to that meeting. And who is going to be attending, we?
I will attend, I mean, if anybody else is attending, they're welcome to be the delegate, you know.
So why don't we?
I nominate Mr. Schlickman as our delegate.
Second, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, it carries unanimously, so Paul, can you bring, like, bring the motions to us?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, they're published, I can, we, we can get it to you and you can offer opinions.
So we should.
Run the next agenda.
Yeah, the, the resolutions.
So M A, M A S C resolution, no, we should discuss them here.
I didn't.
Well, no, we, we want to talk about them so that if the committee has an opinion.
But you want to talk about them now?
Reflected by the, well, no.
Okay, look at the time.
Yeah, so we're not going to talk about them now.
Okay.
We'll talk about them next week and maybe devote fifteen minutes of the meeting to it, people read them in advance, if anyone has any opinion. The, the delegate, if I remember, if I recall, the rules can vote however he wishes, he doesn't have to listen to the committee's advice. You're not bound by what the committee votes.
If he doesn't, he doesn't come back here, though.
Well, okay, but I mean, so, yeah, right, okay, fair enough, fair enough.
Yeah, right, you might not vote for me to delegate next year.
You're right, okay, so. Okay, committee reports, we're going to, budget.
Okay, budget. So draft budget, we met on Tuesday, the draft budget calendar is coming, probably our next meeting. Monthly reports, we had a discussion about what we'd like to see, we're going, we talked with Mr. Dint, Dinesio, and he's going to do kind of a first draft for us and then we're going to do feedback and, and work towards perfection that way. The budget book, we started some discussions, we're hoping to see changes this year with the aim of improving usability engagement and, and we're going to continue that discussion in future meetings. Outreach, we're going to do what we did last year, and our next meeting is on the seventeenth at five thirty.
Very good, thank you. Community relations, kind of having a report.
Well, as you know, we did our HRC, but we also came up with the final plan for the school committee office hours, so here's what I've done, I have created one, all of the signs are in here, so all you have to do is take off the top one, and then the next one is on there, so we just pass it around, and look what's on the back. The schedule, look at that, it's updated, look at that, tells you where to go, when you have to be there, who's going to be there, so the first two are Paul and Jennifer.
Yep. That's the sign, I'll take it.
There you go, so then we can just pass the sign to the next group.
It's a cafe Nero.
If, if we do anything outreach to the community, the cafe has two Fs.
Oh, yeah.
Cafe Nero.
They made it, they made it unique.
Don't ask me.
In the word cafe.
In the word cafe, it's spelled with two Fs. Don't ask me, I didn't do it.
Not anywhere else.
No, no.
Yeah, it is.
All right, okay, okay. Very good.
That's it, we don't have another meeting planned.
CIAA.
We will be meeting five thirty PM on October tenth.
And the agenda items will be?
Obviously, we've got some correspondence that we want to talk to the folks about the gifted who, who were before us, and Mr. Hayner's got a motion.
I may, and I apologize, I emailed it to you earlier tonight, I didn't get it printed out. I move that the issues mentioned in the email from Kathleen Roach dated September nineteenth and from Colette Lamontagne, I hope I pronounced it right, dated September nineteenth also, be referred to CIAA for discussion and if appropriate, to make recommendations to the full committee as soon as possible. Put those on the agenda for that night.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
I don't know why we need a motion.
I believe the second email was about the Gibbs, the kindergarten TAs.
Both of, what are, what are the topics of them, are they both about TAs in kindergarten?
No, they're not.
Gifted in curriculum.
Oh, right.
One is a curriculum question.
Right.
Raised about the curriculum topic.
Oh, the health.
Yes.
Health, teaching.
And the reason I made a motion is that's what I was directed to do.
So I mean, some committee can talk about it, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure to what extent we can really delve into the curriculum taught by a classroom teacher.
Right.
I mean, our job is to listen to people.
I think we're going to listen to parents.
Let's do it, then.
We're going to listen to parents that raised the issue.
Right.
And then our authority may be limited by law. All right, any, okay, so there was a motion, a second, any more discussion?
Well, I, I have their email from Ms. Lamontagne, it is about kids' kindergarten needs, so, we can refer it, ignore it, that's fine.
But then the second one is about.
One, one is about the curriculum issue on health.
Curriculum and the, and the healthcare, yeah, healthcare, and not the healthcare, the.
Health, the teaching, how we're teaching health.
Both emails, the, the, the people were told that it needed to go to CIAA.
Yeah, right, that's it, so it can be discussed, but we're not bringing a classroom teacher in to talk about our curriculum.
No, no, no.
Superintendent.
Bring the assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction.
Okay.
Right.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, okay, pass it, so, I didn't know if this works for Rod, do you want to, we should probably check the time.
It's October tenth?
October tenth at five thirty.
October tenth at.
October tenth?
At five thirty on Tuesday.
Okay.
Does that work for you? We can adjust.
Well, check here, I mean, I don't want to, okay.
So I'll check my calendar?
Yeah, if it doesn't, I think you need to be.
If it doesn't, we can make an adjustment.
Make an adjustment, yeah, because.
Absolutely.
Okay, facilities, there's really.
Nothing, but I will be planning a meeting at some point next couple of weeks.
Policies and procedures, Len?
Yeah, still working on planning meeting.
School enrollment task force, there's.
Hasn't met.
Legal services review committee, Len and Bill?
We're waiting on some illegal expenses and then we'll set a meeting date.
Okay, Arlington High School building committee, we already talked about that, the Gibbs Committee.
Nothing.
Warrant committee.
Everybody got paid.
That's always good, any liaison reports, any announcements?
Arlington Youth Health Safety, you got the whole report from them, so.
It was an impressive report.
They're very, very nicely done.
It was impressive, yes.
I guess, I don't know if it's liaison or what, but I just wanted to point out to people that emailed that Rod, Ron, Rob sent us earlier today about the Building Bridges Conference, I thought it looks really interesting, I want to try and go, it's on the eighteenth, if anyone else wants to go and carpool.
I'm interested in going.
Dr. Bodie was checking to see if we're covered under the member.
Even if you're not, you know, I think it's really worthwhile going.
Yeah, I sent an email to it.
The membership covers three, three people going for the membership dues, but we can send more people, I don't know how many more people, but.
Diversity.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm interested.
The diversity group, yeah.
I'm bringing it up tomorrow at the administrative meeting, so there'll probably be some people from administration, we'll have to find out how many people can go.
Yeah.
I didn't know there was a limit.
Well, I mean, there's not a limit, there's only a limit in how much, it's, there's a fee, how much we want to spend, yeah.
As long as we pay, we'll, they'll let us in.
We'll let you guys.
Okay. Any announcements, any future agenda items you want on the agenda, yeah?
I'd love to see something, and maybe this happens months from now, sort of an update on the bring your own device rollout, you know, how it's, what, you know, what's changed since last year, what are we doing?
I would modify that to include the one-to-one trials that are going on, I know there's a new one at Dallin that we haven't been briefed on, so.
Okay, so that'll be the report at some point, you got to figure out your schedules and see when you have something ready, it doesn't have to be, yep.
Yeah.
Want to talk about this?